Good evening and welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting for July 17, 2018. Let's start the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have minutes of the regular meeting from June 19 that need to be approved, community relations announcements in open forum, then we have appointments of resignation. We have an appointment for the cultural council, an appointment for the stipend advisory committee, an appointment for the zoning board of appeals alternate, an appointment for the solar moratorium review committee, and an appointment for a dispatcher. We also have a resignation. Monica Redman, the assistant town accountant, has handed in her resignation. Scheduled appointments at 6:40, which we're running a little bit behind, and we apologize. The planning board appointment for the joint board is done by the joint board with the planning board and the board of selectmen. Request to remove property from Chapter 61A Gunther LLC, 21 Hornstead Road. We have a poll hearing for Dresser Hill Road. We have at 6:55, we have an application for flammable and combustible liquids for Otis Land Management at 125 Southridge Road. 7:00 PM, we have discussion of and a vote on engaging in the process to change health insurance benefits under Chapters 32B, Section 21-23. Under new business, we have citizens petition to hold a special town meeting, A to rescind Article 27 Marijuana Zoning Amendment, and B, article on whether to ban all marijuana establishments. Number two, under new business, building inspection, inspectional service review of fees, request for a Tootsie Roll drive from the Knights of Columbus, consideration of four financial policies, capital planning, debt management, financial reserves, and reconciliation. Under five, we have CMG proposal for fiscal year 2019 for Ford Dresser Hill Road and the highway garage. We have a memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer for Bay Path Vocational Tech. We have a special permit for two lots and a common driveway, property for property solutions, real estate, and contracting. And we have a request for qualification for the OPM and design service for the public safety building. Old business, Fourscore Inc., which is a marijuana growth facility, and site plans, special permit, and modification of approval plans, question and answer. We'll have the committee reports, we'll have the board of selectmen policy review. No student selectmen's, select persons report tonight, we're on summer holiday. We have the town administrators' report, and then we have other business unknown at the time of posting. The next meeting is going to be August 14, 2018. The board will adjourn to executive session, and then the only reason we're going to come out is to adjourn to the regular meeting. So with that, do I have any, do I have motion on the minutes of June 19?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we accept the June 19 regular meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
I just had one, there's a few typos on page 14, we need to change tortuous to tortuous?
Tortious.
Everywhere we, just wanted to note that, that's all.
Okay. Abstain. Mr. Singer's going to abstain. Any further discussion? Okay, so the motion is for the corrections, the spelling corrections that we will approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Announcements for the board of selectmen. Last day to register the vote is Friday, July 20, 2018, in the town clerk's office from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM to be able to vote at the special town meeting. The town child recycling committee is holding a raffle for an indoor/outdoor automatic composter in a terracotta-style rain barrel. Tickets are available in the selectmen's office. Raffle drawing will be at the Blueberry Festival at the community center on Ford Dresser Hill Road on July 29, 2018. Is there anybody here for open forum? Ms. Stanton? That's okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm here representing area concerned residents here in Charlton. This is to, I've got a letter I'd like to read to you, please. This is, it's to Charlton Board of Selectmen. On April 27, 2018, the town of Charlton signed a settlement agreement with 508 International to allow them to modify their operation from a campground motocross track, initially approved for April to October, now approved all year long. The new agreement was done without any input or notification to a butters, including an expansion of, as I mentioned, year-round activities that's including snowmobile racing. Additional activities approved in this settlement included the addition of racing of four-by-fours, ATVs, UTVs, side-by-sides, and even mud bogging, which as you've known in the past has caused noise issues. There was a mud bogging event held at 508 last year that featured straight piped eight-cylinder engines at full throttle, which was heard over a mile away. The Charlton Board of Selectmen and the planning board have both seen, have been sent to video link, taken from inside a butters home, which was my own home. The settlement agreement suggests that the planning board might require new traffic and sound studies due to the louder vehicles allowed and the size of the events. At last week's planning board meeting, they decided to not require either additional study or any sound monitoring whatsoever. The planning board also approved the use of lad road for non-event activity traffic, which seems to be in direct conflict to what the board of selectmen had previously mandated. That is no use of lad road for 508 activities except for emergency vehicles. At the recent Tough Mudder event held at 508, a crowd that was supposed to be under 2,000 swelled to over 7,000 on Saturday alone, causing traffic backups. Charlton Police did an admirable job, but the bottom line is that the winding, okay, is that a narrow winding two-lane road is not designed to handle that much traffic, especially when vehicles are stopped, turning, and pulling out from the entrance in multiple parking lots into Brookfield Road. Other issues during the event involved pedestrians walking on the road, participants trespassing on a butters property to defecate, and on-site porta-potties overflowing. There were also complaints about four-by-fours traveling at high speed on Brookfield Road, turning into and out of 508 prior to the event. A short video of one of these, one of the speeding four-by-fours was provided to Chief Maxfield. Charlton Town Attorney Jonathan Silverstein stated at a meeting on June 19 that Tough Mudder was one of 508's events that would serve as a canary in the coal mine. Well, area residents can tell you that Canary is long deceased. At the May 21st annual town meeting, voters decided by almost two to one margin to not allow a rezoning of 508 property to commercial business. That alone should tell the town officials that majority of residents do not want intrusive commercial growth in direct proximity to their neighborhoods. It's not just commercial motorsports, it's also solar farms, gravel pits, expanded landfill operations, and massive marijuana cultivation. Area residents are learning that there are no more safe havens for their families in Charlton anymore, just plots of land that can be developed if the town coffers are replenished enough. I just want to bring up just a couple more points. When we went to the hearing, we asked about, there was a situation, as I mentioned, about trespassing and somebody defecating on the person's property. They simply asked if they could please just put up a fence that will, there was trash that was blowing into the residence yard, to just please put up a trash, put up a fence that will fix the trash and trespassing issues. And then also, they said that they no longer have to have noise, real-time noise monitoring, which was part of the initial approved plan. And that would lessen the noise complaints. And then, you know, possibly, I'm not sure how we do this, but lessen, limit the attendance, you know, like 2,000, I mean, that's what they originally said, not 7,000, and then a combined days, it was 9,000 in total. You know, and that would fix the traffic, some of the traffic issues. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Singer.
Do you have copies of that?
Amy, could we have a copy of that, please?
I'm Warren Cisco from 38 North Sullivan Road in Charlton, Mass. I'm at a butter to 508, and before the mutter event, I went to the planning board, which is where some of you folks told me to go with my concerns, and I went there about people jumping over the wall and desecrating on my property. I had that concern, I had concern of trespassing, I had concern of all the litter and papers and potato chip bags and candy wrappers all blowing onto my property. I was concerned that they were allowed to clear up to the stone wall, leaving no buffer, no setback, and that there's nothing to stop the trash. I mean, I wanted to see a fence, some sort of setback or buffer, and maybe some bushes or something to catch the trash. And none, after the mutter event, the, it's, I went back to the planning board and, these are some of the pictures of people desecrating on my property, some of them right in front of me when I'm sitting there watching them. If I did that to some lady, I'd probably be arrested, but the lady can do it in front of me, and it's okay. It's the poor lady having an emergency. So they were trespassing, they were desecrating on my property, and I have hundreds of pictures of trash on my property. I wouldn't let them come pick it up from the mutter group because they were volunteers with no insurance. The planning board told me, Pat, that she would get in the middle, gave me her phone number, told me to call her, and she would set up with Mr. Jennings to come pick the trash up, and he said he would provide certificates of insurance for both workman's comp and liability. I called Pat today, but last night I went up and looked, there's no more trash on my property. Somebody has been up there trespassing again and thrown all the trash back over the wall, along with other trash that they put up, putting up a barbed wire fence. I, during the course of the meeting of the planning board, the last one, Mr. Jennings said I dropped this paper, and I refused it numerous times, and you can look at the tape to see that. This is the paper. Those right there are accusations made against me a year ago. They were sent to the Charlton Conservation, they were sent to the DCR, claiming I did all these things illegally on my property. Them papers were signed, forged with somebody else's name on it that I had given permission to walk through my property to look over the boundary at what Mr. Jennings was doing. Mr. Jennings handed that to me, saying I dropped it. I refused it, told him I didn't. That, I feel, is a threat to me.
Okay, Mr. Cisco, I have to stop you here, okay? Because what we, we're going to leave people and personalities out of this.
Okay.
And what we're going to do is, you've given us your complaints that you feel that either-
I went to the police with that today.
Either the, either the planning board or the board of health is where these belong. We will pass them on to them, okay? And we will go from there. But thank you very much, we appreciate you coming forward and giving us your complaints.
I did go to the board of health before and after, and I was a pervert for taking the pictures, pretty much. And the trash, it was my fault it was there because I wouldn't let the uninsured volunteers go pick it up. So I've been to both boards, I'm getting zero for this.
That is-
I have one more question, though. They did put up a barbed wire fence a day or two before the event, before the last planning board meeting to stop people from going over the property line, but there's only 19 T-posts in the fence, it's not very long. Is there any other place in Charlton that the town allows a barbed wire fence to keep 10,000 people from going over your property line? Is that the new norm?
Mr. Cisco, that is not under the, under the purview of this board.
Okay.
Your complaints lie with the planning board, the site plan, that they have in place with these people, and with the board of health for some of the other things that you have. Other than that, the trespassing, you have a right to post your property, and when people do it, when people do violate your property, then you call the police department-
I did call the police.
And those are, those are the things, those are the things that you have to do.
This is what happened when the police come. They took my phone, they looked at every single picture on it, and then they deleted the picture of the lady desecrating.
So-
My proof was gone. Not that it's gone, I have it on other family members' phones, that's not, without the picture, it's just not on my phone anymore.
And thank you very much for coming forward and giving us your, giving us your input on this, and we will, we will send the information on to the other boards also.
The other boards have the information, but they're not doing anything about it.
We will forward it to them. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else to open forum? Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. You have an appointment next for the cultural council. As you're aware, the cultural council is in need of members attached as a talent bank form from Christine Grendowski, seeking to be appointed to the cultural council. This appointment is for three years. Each member of the cultural council can serve a maximum of two consecutive terms or a total of six years. After the terms are over, they must remain off the council for one-year interval before serving additional terms. I would recommend that the board make the appointment.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we appoint Christine Grendowski to the cultural council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Yes, sir. At the board's April 10, 2018, meeting, you formed a stipend advisory committee which will review stipends and bring back recommendations to the board for next annual town meeting, which will consist of two current board committee, commission members, two, three at large, one member of the appointed personnel board, and the human resource director. Richard Vaughn is the only appointee to this committee to date as one of the current board committee commission members. Attached is a talent bank form from Robert Leary, seeking to be appointed to this committee. I would recommend the board make the appointment of Mr. Leary as a citizen-at-large. The openings continue to be replaced on the cable and town website.
What are the board's wishes?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we appoint Robert Leary as the citizen-at-large member to the stipend advisory committee.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is attached as a talent bank form from Shane Woodson, who is seeking to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals met with Mr. Woodson and would recommend the board appoint him as an alternate member. This is the only current opening on their board. I would recommend the board make the appointment.
Mr. Chair, I recommend, I recommend we appoint Shane Woodson as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is attached as a talent bank form from Eric Falcone from Stafford Street and Lori Dagan from Oxgood, Ozgood Road, seeking to be appointed to the solar moratorium review committee. You also ask that the planner and conservation agent be asked if they would sit on the committee. The planner, Bill Scanlon, and conservation agent Todd Gerard have agreed to serve. At this time, selectman Singer and Speedwack have been appointed, along with the fire chief. Adding these four appointments would fill the committee. As you remember, the zoning enforcement officer will attend as needed for informational purposes only. I would recommend the board make the following appointments.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer.
I would move to appoint Eric Falcone, Lori Dagan as citizen reps, and Bill Scanlon as the planning board rep, and Todd Gerard as the rep from conservation.
Second. Is motion a second? All in, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is a letter of, attached is a letter from Police Chief Maxfield requesting Amy Cardon be appointed to the position of full-time dispatcher. She's been working for the town of Charlton for two and a half years as a per diem officer, dispatcher, and is well-trained. Ms. Cardon will be filling a vacant position of Penny Ryan, who took a job in Auburn. I would recommend the board make the appointment.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer.
I move that we appoint Abby Cardon to the position of full-time dispatcher.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir, attached is a letter, another letter from Erica Redman, resigning as the assistant town accountant. She's accepted the position of treasurer in Westbrook Field. We wished her well in her new position. We held a finance team meeting, which included the finance director, HR director, director of assessing, and treasurer-collector. It was agreed that finding good financial employees and keeping them is one of our highest priorities. We would recommend that the position be changed from 20 to 38 hours, making the position full-time. In the past, the board has noted the importance of succession planning. We were hoping that Ms. Redman would stay and train as the next finance director, but being a part-time position, I believe we will continue to lose good staff. I would recommend the board approve the resignation as requested and vote to allow the new position to be posted at 37 hours per week. A letter thanking her for her time will be prepared and is in your sign folder.
Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir.
Question, 37 hours a week, or do you want 38 hour, would you recommend 38 hours a week?
We are now doing 38 hours a week because it is a half an hour for four days, which is the lunch. It was 37 and a half when it was five days.
So should we post for 37 hours or for 38?
38.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we approve Ms. Redman's resignation as requested and to allow the new position to be posted at 38 hours per week.
Is there a second?
I have some questions, Mr. Chair.
So do I.
Well, can we have the second, then we can discuss, please.
Second, for discussion purposes.
Okay, for discussion purposes.
Actually, the finance director's right outside looking around.
Absolutely. Mr. Singer, Ms. Speedwack was chomping at the bit to say something, so I'm going to, we're going to defer to Ms. Speedwack first.
So, my questions would really revolve around cost, what the total cost would be, and we just went through the budget season, if this was something that was that important, why wasn't this put forward earlier? And has this been through FinCom?
Has not been through FinCom yet, I'll be meeting with them tomorrow night.
I just would assume that would be passed by there before we would maybe, unless it's time, I mean-
Generally, we come here to the board of selectmen, get approval, and then we go to finance committee for the approval of the funding. And the reason we didn't do it during the budget season was we had no idea or foresight that Monica would actually take another position. The finance director has been working very hard, and with her, we did increase her hours, but unfortunately, I think this is going to continue to be a revolving position.
Again, I understand we have to approve the position, but when it, because it has to deal with finances, I just would assume, again, natural progression, it would go to finance, FinCom first, and everyone could come together and then would vote on it. That's what I'd recommend doing, unless it's time-sensitive.
Mr. Chair, I would amend my motion to include FinCom approval.
Pending FinCom.
Pending finance committee approval.
Okay. Is there an amendment to the second, or? Okay. Amendment to the second, okay. Ms., Karen, any more, any other discussion?
Good.
I, that was one of my questions. The other one of my questions was, it was 20 hours a week for a reason. And to simply, I mean, we all want good employees, we want them to stay, but I want to make sure that we're not increasing hours and costs just to try and keep someone, if the position doesn't warrant it. So if it was 20 hours a week previously, I'm assuming, which we should never do, that it was 20 hours a week because that was all the position required. I want to have some, hopefully some confirmation from others that this position actually requires more than the 20 hours, it actually requires going to 38 hours. And if so, why the sudden change? How come it was all, it would have been done in 20 hours previously?
Do you want to take this? Sure. I've been asking, actually, for more hours, this is what we could afford this year in the budget. I have also been tracking my hours, Robin knows, I submit the amount of hours that I'm putting every week. We had hoped when I first came that that would kind of taper off, and that it would become more in the line of, you know, 40, 45 hours a week that I'm putting in, but I'm putting in excessive amounts of hours. And now I've got to train somebody that had, someone new coming in that won't have any experience at all in, with the Charlton history. I would like to be able to take on more finance director duties. Right now, I spend a lot of time doing a lot of data entry, even with 20 hours a week.
How many hours are you doing a week now?
I'm averaging between 55 to 60, depending on how much I do at home.
So it's another 15 to 20 hours above me. Any other questions? First of all, Dawn, thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
That's important beyond, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. It's difficult because you haven't had a finance director role here, and there's a lot of comparison to the prior town accountant and how many hours they needed. I'm like, well, I'm trying to bring in the role of what a finance director does, I come in with that experience, and I want to be able to utilize it for you, but if you, I can't have the hours, the basic stuff has to get done first before I can do any of the finance director work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, or?
So any vote taken here will be based upon also requiring the approval of FinCom?
Correct. So, motion a second, it's been amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Craver.
Yes, sir. Next is your 6:40 appointment, which we apologize certainly for running late. There is a vacancy on the planning board due to resignation of Peter Starkus. The opening has been running on cable and the town's website, as the board policy states. The planning board is recommending the appointment of alternate member Don Clay to fill this vacancy until May 2019 election. The vote for the appointment must be done jointly and by roll-call vote by both boards.
Patsy?
Come on, Dawn.
And your board also, please. And your board also, please. So, call your board.
Call a meeting to order. We have to do a roll call. Alicia G. here.
Jane Benson.
Patsy, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Saffrulich.
I move that we appoint Don Clay to fill the opening position on the planning board.
Second. Motion a second, roll call vote. Mr. Saffrulich?
Aye.
Ms. Speedwack?
Aye.
Mr. Singer?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Patsy?
I make a motion that we... Don, I mean, those are both... Second. All in favor?
Roll call, well, Patsy.
Aye.
Aye.
Jane Benson, aye. Alicia G., aye. Patsy, go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you very much. While the planning board's here, I know that there's been some discussion about the timeline and how things took place with the... With the article, I want to say 27? Or was it 29?
27, sorry.
27, and what and when. So what we did is Kurt was heavily involved with this, as was the town council, as was the town planner, as was the planning board, okay? The selectmen had no rule on this, okay? None.
Mr. Chair? If it's related to article 27, I'm going to go outside.
Um, that's fine. So, let the record show, Mr. Singer's refusing himself. So we have the timeline here of what happened, when it happened, and I think some of the facts were missed, okay? The timeline shows that before the public hearing, everything went through everybody, and the changes were made before you had your public hearing. The article that went before the town to be approved was the exact one that you had the hearing on. So we have... Did we have enough copies?
Yes.
For the planning board, just so they know what we're talking about. I don't know where the... Where the thought process came from that that wasn't the case. But this is the case. This is the factual timeline of what happened. So there... That law, that bylaw that went to town meeting was not changed by anybody after your public hearing.
Yeah, obviously, tomorrow night, we'll discuss this in very much detail. I had that big question. Did we totally just miss the ball? Because when we voted, we were all... The whole entire board was under the assumption that we were allowing three facilities in total in a story, and then it was changed to two. And only three, because we were told that that was the minimum we could go. Now, we... We're all on the same page there. So in addition, we can't find the... And all of us keep our records. I have a box of all. And I just don't have that final... That final version that was handed to us at the meeting where we voted to approve. And I'm not saying that anything inappropriate happened. I'm saying all of us are a little confused at how it went from here to there. And again, we may have all just been so dependent on Alan because Alan had always walked us through step by step. Every single change was highlighted. I mean, they physically went through and highlighted every single person's version on the board. So when... Even at town meeting, when I pushed it at town meeting, I still believed that it was a particular version. So we all need to get straight what we really meant. And then, I guess, the legality of it all. It's on us, it's not on anybody else. That's... I don't know what else, if you guys want to add anything to that. We are just surprised at what went through.
Here's what I have to say, because I've sat in that chair. I know how dependent the planning board was on Alan, okay? And I'm going to wow the... I'm going to ask the town administrator to bring up a couple of things because on what went on with Alan when this was first discussed. So, Robin, if you could please tell the board what happened here.
Regarding the discussion of whether or not to have a moratorium or to put in any zoning bylaws?
Please.
I went back to look at where we had had conversations about moratoriums. I have emails going back from Jim Cosgrove sending us information about other towns doing moratoriums and providing it free of charge so that we had to, Alan and I. Alan's responses were that he had talked with the board. He was in the... Of the belief that the bylaws that we had were sufficient, the zoning bylaws we had were sufficient, and he was not interested in pursuing moratoriums. Now, coming from me, I have a concern just even saying that because of some of the accusations that's happened. I have emails that go back and forth, and I'd be glad to provide them to the planning board. But I think that there has been a place where the board of selectmen have been somewhat accused of not acting or sleeping when these bylaws came out and... On marijuana. And it really wasn't the board's responsibility. It was the planning boards at the time. And it was the planning director who was saying, no, we do not need the additional zoning bylaws. We can do it with what we have.
I try not to point fingers, and I do have... I went back and I saw some of the old emails from Alan. And I think back then, that was the old interpretation of the bylaw. Because the original interpretation was that we didn't allow cultivating in agricultural zones because we were going along with what the rest of the state was going along with. We interpreted that marijuana was an agricultural crop, and they weren't. And that was the original... And that's what... And I'll... You were actually copying on some of these emails. And that was... With that, under that interpretation, we were kind of fine because the only place that marijuana could go was in industrial zoned areas, which kind of kept us safe. And then, all of a sudden, the... All of a sudden, the interpretation of the bylaw change, which that's... Again, that has nothing to do with us. And so we went from going, we're pretty safe, we should probably get the word marijuana in our zoning bylaws, no being rushed, to up... Our chair stepped down, our planning board director is gone. We had, you know, we were trying to deal with the salary and everything else. Then, all of a sudden, this new bylaw gets thrown in front of us. And if you watch the meetings, it pretty much said, if you don't do anything, it's going to go everywhere. And we were... I kind of... We were all kind of like, okay, let's... Let's, you know, let's be the heroes here and save the town from becoming pot spill. But what... That kind of didn't happen. We ended up doing the opposite, but under false impressions, under our misinterpretation, under our misunderstanding, so...
But I think the concern with the board is that we were getting blamed in public, on social media, and in the paper for making changes to this thing, that we had absolutely nothing to do with. And I... And I have always tried, no matter where I sat, to... I try not to shoot from the hip. And I think that that happened this time. I would... I would please... I request that the next time before we shoot from the hip, that we make sure that we have all the facts and that we... And that we listen to the town planner, who knows the exact timeline, and that we... And that we, you know, just make sure that what we're saying is correct.
Mr. Chairman? I just would like to ask one question. You were talking about emails back and forth. What's the timeframe of those emails? Are we talking recent emails or... Give me a timeframe.
April 2017 is when all of this...
No, was there anything... I'm thinking it was way longer.
There was some earlier ones, back to 2012, I think. I'd have to go back and take it and look. But it's been a long stand.
What's now is now, or two different things. Our point, or I'm sure the planning board's view in 2012 was drastically different than our planning board's view in 2018. As far as the other thing, I don't recall in what I read that anybody was called out. I don't believe...
I believe...
I could be mistaken, but you're pitching us a little off guard here.
I believe some of the information that I have seen is that, basically, the board of selectmen was being accused of changing the bylaw after the hearing.
Through the chair?
After the hearing?
No.
I think to summarize what Patsy's saying is absolutely not. We're simply saying that through our own fault, we misread what we were approving. There's absolutely no accusation anywhere. We thought we were approving two, or actually, originally, three. It went to town meeting, we thought we were approving two. There's no accusation there, because if we'd read it better, or simply put, we would have changed it at that time. And so shame on us, and we just... We will own that all day long. No... Nobody forced us to do this, we all misread it. And to Patsy's point, completely, Alan used to... And I'm not praising or saying anything except simply fact, and this isn't a knock on Bill at all. But Alan used to read things and then detail them to within an inch of their life where we wish he'd just summarized a little bit better. And we became dependent upon that. And so when he left, we were so used to that that we were skimmers, and we became skimmers, and that's on us for doing the... For skimming. But now we just want to make sure that, moving forward, we as a planning board, who clearly misread something, again, not accusing anyone, needs to make sure that what we put forth is actually what the town wants.
Thank you, Alicia. I appreciate that. And I was as dependent on Alan as anybody. And on that... On that point, he would beat something to death.
Yes. And there's some very well-educated, very experienced people on our board that... That we look at stuff like this as, you know, contracts and everything else. And for something to go from that first version to the last without... I mean, and we've been watching these meetings. It just... Out of this world. And it just kind of... It got messed. And again, none of us have that final version. We just don't know what actually happened in that. And we're going to research that on our side. And no blame, and if the last meeting that we had looked like we blamed anybody... I was going over the details that I had in front of me of the changes that were never discussed on our board. And here, going forward, we're spending much time to try to fix the... Whatever had happened and do the research to figure out where... How we actually got from one version to the next.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, guys.
I had a quick comment through the chair, just about the process in general tonight. We just got handed a 12- to 15-page document. I certainly can't contribute to this conversation because I've not read through the document. I think it's very important you figure out, you know, how something... How did it happen? How do we make sure it doesn't happen again? But to discuss this tonight in detail, I hope we schedule a time to really figure out and sort out the pieces of this puzzle because, again, I didn't know we were going to talk about this. So typically, don't we table things so we can read and then all contribute?
The discussion wasn't on the exact document. That was given to us, so we have it, number one. And number two, it was given to the planning board so that they have it, so that when they have their discussion about what happened. But what I want to make sure that was clear was that my feelings, which I think I brought out to the planning board and things that have been out there that we, in some way, shape, or form, were involved with this, that we weren't.
No, and I respect that, and I respect you as well. It's just, it would have been nice to get this in advance.
Mr. Chair, I also agree. If we can get prior notification, I had no idea this was going to be talked about.
So, the way this happened was Kurt had put together... We'd asked him to put together a timeline. He'd worked on it. It was finished and handed to me about five minutes before. I really want to thank him for taking the time. He put some things aside to try and get that ready for tonight's meeting, for the board to have and to give and share with the planning board. Again, as the chairman just said, there was not an intention to have you read it. There was an intention, if you wanted, and Kurt is standing right there behind you, that if you wanted him to go through the timeline or you had any questions, he was here. But I don't see the need of that. But I just want to be really clear that there was no expectation that you read it and went through it tonight.
Do we agree, moving forward, we should come together, both boards, again, and discuss this? Or are you just putting this today?
No, absolutely.
And we'll do the same. We'll go through, all of us, and detail by detail and verify it to all of the box of minutes and notes and that I have taken through all of our meetings and all of the meetings that I've watched, and to make sure that all this is accurate also.
Excellent. Can I just make one comment to the chair? Dawn, welcome to the floor.
Thank you. And I want to say, although I wasn't involved with the planning... And correct me if I'm wrong, but the first time that we saw the final draft that was to be approved in the public hearing was the night of the public hearing. So to go on what Karen says, when you're handed a stack of paperwork for a meeting to try to skim through and find out... And I think everybody here just assumed it was the same version that they had put forward in the planning board meeting, and the highlights, the changes, were never highlighted to the board. So the assumptions were made, and it was incorrect.
And then through the chair, you bring up a very good point, Mr. Clay. I know it's very difficult when you... And I know your job is very difficult, all the jobs are difficult. But when we're handed something to the night of our meeting and the changes aren't highlighted and they're just kind of included in the text, it's very difficult to sort through that. As you know, I mean, our package, what, about six inches?
Sometimes more. With that, well, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Ms. Craver?
Your turn.
Oh, meaning a jury adjourned. We have to do a walk second. Yes.
So next up is attached is a request from Gunter LLC requesting to convert land currently held in Chapter 61A to another use. The parcel that will be converted is identified as assessor parcel number 40-B-45.2, located at 21 Horn Homestead Road, containing approximately 124-plus or less acres. The planning board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice.
Public hearing notice. Please be advised that the board of selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 17, 2018, at 6:45 PM at Charlton Town Hall. 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507, to act on a request by Gunter LLC to convert land currently held in Chapter 61A to another use. The parcel will be converted... The parcel that will be converted is identified as assessor's parcel number 40-B-45.2, located at 21 Horn Homestead Road, containing approximately 124-plus or minus acres. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. With that, the public hearing is open. Does the board have any comments or anything for the public hearing?
Frank B. Carey with Burton Engineering, representing Gunter LLC, if you do have any comments.
Same guy in the audience, have any comments on the Gunters changing their... Taking the land out of 61A? Does the board have anything to say? Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to load on to wave our first rate of refusal?
Excuse me, I do have one question on that conversion. Is Steve Coronis, Olfrus Road...
Come have a seat, Steve.
Is there any idea or what are they going to convert it to?
It's a solar project. It's actually already been installed. So it should have been taken out of Chapter 61 a few months ago, actually.
It's already been installed. There's nothing new going up there, nothing...
No.
Not a pot farm, not...
No.
Thinking...
Just to clarify that.
I'm not there a lot, I didn't realize.
I'm making a motion to wave the first rate of refusal. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Saffrulich.
A move that we wave our first rate... A move that we wave our first rate of refusal for Chapter sixty-one A for the property specified?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Just regarding the last comment that was made, how did solar get there, like before it was taken out, or just?
I don't think, I don't think the solar field's up yet.
He said it's up.
Is it up? Is this, is this solar, is this solar field installed?
Yes, it, yes. It should've been, the land should've been taken out of Chapter sixty-one prior to the solar site going in.
Okay, but now I'm going hacking back to my time at the planning board.
Yep.
Did, did, was the, was the land removed from sixty-one A for the purpose of building houses originally?
The land's still in Chapter sixty-one A.
But, but I, was it removed when they did the subdivision site plan?
I don't think, I, not a hundred percent, but I don't think it was ever actually removed because they never actually built out the subdivision. We're actually on the agenda to withdraw the subdivision with the planning board, so those houses are no longer going to be proposed, the subdivision's going to be withdrawn. And the subdivision was not extended, and it's gonna expire anyway, and we're withdrawing it. He'd like to do something different with the remaining property.
And I'm just going back to when I, when I was at the planning board, because this was done, I couldn't remember if they withdrew it. Sometimes people take it out of sixty-one A.
Right, yeah, no, he didn't want to take it out of sixty-one A until he actually created the subdivision, created the separate parcels for tax reasons, tax benefit to leave it at sixty-one A.
There is a problem.
Just another question, actually.
Not your problem.
If there's any kind of back taxes or anything like that, do, how to, again, this is kind of all new to me, and I know you're very familiar with it because of your experience, Mr. Chairman?
The assessor takes care of the back taxes, part the tax, between the tax collector and the assessor, they take care of the back taxes. My question, I got, go ahead, Joe.
Two questions, one on the back taxes. Can you please get an update on, on what those are and how we approach that? And number two is, who is responsible to making sure that properties actually out of sixty-one A before development actually occurs? Is that planning board, is that building inspector?
It's a combination.
Can we find out what happened, please?
Yes, exactly. That's, there's a hole in the system somewhere. Not, like I said, not your problem.
But what else? It's our problem, though.
Yeah, it is our problem.
Right, so what is the recourse?
There is really no recourse, you just, you vote to take it out of sixty-one A, the, the, if the town wanted the property, then, then we would buy it as undeveloped property, I believe. Now, I'll have to defer all that stuff to, to the assessor and the tax collector and how that works, but the problem is that somebody was actually able to build something on something that was in sixty-one A that should've come out, and we need to find out, we have a hole in the system as to that, so. With that, Ms. Craver, if you could please put that on.
I'd be glad to.
With that, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So, for what I'm hearing here, it was, was, there's a little bit of suspicion that this might've been a not perfectly legal maneuver?
No, Steve, it's, it's perf, it's legal, okay? What happened is somebody in our system missed the vote, they should not have been able to pull a building permit without having it come out of sixty-one A.
How does that keep happening?
It's, it's not keep happening, this is the first time I have, since.
Well, I think later, later this evening, we're probably gonna come up to another one of those conversations, but it's, but this has already been built?
Yes.
And it's done?
Yeah, and I have no, it's always been.
So, but if you guys are questioning amongst yourselves, I guess my question to, my personal question is, is can you rescind the vote that you just did while you guys find out where, where things went wrong?
No, there is, there is no sense to rescind the vote, we're not interested in buying that property. The town has no interest, and that's all that is. Sixty-one A is just, is just a case that when, before the property can be, can be sold to say somebody else for other development, that the, that the town has the right of first refusal.
I understand.
Okay, so, so the town has no interest, it's not, the board shows no interest in no, none of the other town departments.
But it wasn't, but it wasn't, it wasn't publicized. And this, for this particular case, it's really not on my, but it's, it's not why I'm up here talking right now, but it's very similar to what we're gonna be facing in the future with these marijuana facilities.
If I could add, if I would add my two cents to it, though, as a landowner, you wouldn't take it out of Chapter sixty-one until you were ready to pull a building permit. So even if you get conservation approval, planning board approval, if you don't line up your financing and can't finance the project, you're not gonna build it. And so you wouldn't necessarily want it taken out of Chapter sixty-one until you were ready to actually put a shovel in the ground, and that's the point where it needs to come out, and that's, and that's what was missed on this one.
But it actually has it a button?
For other, for other projects?
I don't, I don't remember the hearing where, where it was going to be.
You just had the hearing.
And you approved it?
Correct.
With?
Because, because we didn't, we have no, we have no interest.
They're only approving, not, they're only approving, waiving their right of first refusal to acquire the property, that's all they're doing this evening. They're not approving the project, they're not approving the site plan, they have nothing to do with that, that's all still planning board, conservation. And same with the other projects that you're talking about, if it's in Chapter sixty-one now, they shouldn't get a building permit until it's out of Chapter sixty-one, unless it's an agricultural use, and it's part of that, the exemption under Chapter sixty-one.
And that, that is the thing, this gentleman was able to pull a building permit while it was still in sixty-one A, that's, that's the problem.
That's the part.
That's the problem.
As long as that is not happening at the orchard, that same process.
I have a feeling a lot of eyes will be on that, so. There's gonna be a lot of eyes on that process, I believe, so.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm.
Thank you, thank you for coming back. And Ms. Craver, if you, like I, like the board asked, if you put that on, how, how, how did that happen? Poll hearing?
Attached, you'll find a request from the National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated seeking to install one J.O. pole on Dresser Hill Road. Also attached is the notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Chief of Police and Highway Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing and read, by reading the notice as sent to the abutters.
And the chairman will. Public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six fifty P.M. or later in the selectman's meeting room, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. zero one five oh seven, to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., seeking permission to locate poles, risin' fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Dresser Hill Road, National Grid to install one J.O. pole on Dresser Hill Road, beginning at a point approximately nineteen hundred and thirty feet south of the center line of the intersection of E. Bailey's Road slash Bailey's Road. National Grid to install one new thirty-five-foot C-two pole eighty-four dash one, approximately forty feet directly across from the existing pole eighty-four, and approximately nineteen hundred and thirty feet south from the closest intersection of Bailey's Road. This work will be installed for a new customer, two sixteen Dresser Hill Road. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Ms. Craver, have we had anything in writing?
No, sir.
Does the board have any questions or comments on new pole? Or poles? No? Joe?
At a previous meeting, Anna, we talked about changing the process of having these, these public hearings? Is that ineffective, or is this just an old, something that was already on the docket?
The change was whether or not you were having a pole, the, a representative from National Grid, and as long as there was no comments or controversy, you agreed that they didn't have to come.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, anybody in the public have anything to say on the new pole on Dresser Hill Road near Bailey's, or E. Bailey's? No? Go ahead.
I'm new at all this, I'm sorry, but I got this in the mail, and I was just more concerned.
If you can please come up to the microphone?
No, no, just have a seat and just identify yourself.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm the representative Sally Williamson Card at two thirty-two Dresser Hill, and I wasn't really quite clear on the map as to, and I didn't look at the pole to see where eighty-four, number eighty-four pole was, so I was, I just came to the meeting to find out, to see if this is not a cell phone pole, this is not one of those giant.
No, no, no.
And two sixteen Dresser Hill, there's already somebody living there in that property, and there was a house being built, but it's not built. Is that what they're talking about?
Yes, it must be, is it a real lot, maybe?
It's, no, it's a bright, no, it's not, well, there is a lot behind it, but there's also a lot alongside of it, which is next door to me. So they've been trying to put something behind two sixteen, and they've also sold off part of their property that's right next door to me to build another house, which they were having problems getting water, was the last I heard, so I didn't know where this pole and cell power or whatever was gonna be placed.
Electrical, it's just a regular white pole.
It said Verizon, so I just wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So motion and second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the poll?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, with motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir, application for propane tanks, number two. Let's see, number two, fuel oil, diesel fuel, kerosene, biofuel, Otis Land Management. Attached is a request from Otis Land Management LLC to store propane number two, fuel oil, diesel fuel, kerosene, and biofuel on property located at one hundred Sturbridge Road, Charlton. Assessor's map thirty-D five point three. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Deputy Chief Cantara. As the board is the issuing authority for this license, he would recommend you approve it. The chairman should open the discussion by reading the public hearing notice as posted in the paper and sent to the abutters.
Notice of public hearing, Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold the public hearing in the selectman's meeting room, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. on Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six fifty-five P.M. to act on a request by Otis Land Management LLC for a new license to store propane number two fuel oil, diesel fuel, kerosene, and biofuel on the property located at one hundred Sturbridge Road, Charlton, Mass. Assessor's map thirty-D five point three. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Ms. Craver, have we had any concerns in writing?
No, sir.
Does the board have any questions or concerns? Does, is anybody here for the public hearing to voice concerns about this? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got a couple of forms to be signed by the selectmen that need to go off to the state fire marshal along with that license. Is there a time that I set up to have that done, or is that something I can set tonight?
Why don't you bring it up now?
How's it going? Is this one signature?
One signature on each, yep. That license, will that be able to be picked up at some point with a signature on it?
Next week.
Next week?
Mary will be back.
Okay.
She'll put it together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Would you like me to have a copy of that to you?
Yes, please. I'm actually, Ralph, let me go make a copy of it, let me get them started on the next one, and then, okay.
Mr. Chairman, we've been notified by our health insurance group, Hampshire County Group Insurance, that all members must adopt Chapter thirty-two B sections, and I, we were notified twenty-one through twenty-three, now we've gotten some information, it's twenty-one through twenty-two, and the town, the finance director is asking to include twenty-three. On June twenty-sixth, the insurance advisory committee held a meeting, and they voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt sections, the sections twenty-one through twenty-three. The unions voted to abstain from the vote, so they did not oppose the vote. If this is not adopted, we have been told we would risk being removed from participation in the trust. The unions have been notified of tonight's meeting by certified mail, as well as the retirement representative. Finance Director is here, along with Ken Lombardi, who is our, from NFP, who is our consultant, to explain the process. So if they want to come, and I need to go do something.
Sure, absolutely. Welcome, Ken. Dawn, good to have you back again. What is this about?
Good evening, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of the board. Ken Lombardi, insurance advisor with NFP, working in the direction of the town management. Just so, some quick background, the town's health insurance program is provided through a large joint purchasing arrangement called the Hampshire County Group Trust, which includes sixty-nine other communities, school districts, and central Mass, and Western Massachusetts. From an insurance perspective, obviously, it may be clear to this board that the reason why the town joined that healthcare trust was, joined robust level of benefits at a really affordable healthcare premium cost. The nature of health insurance with any employer plan, including a municipality in Massachusetts, this size organization, given the number of employees covered under a single group health plan, might be cost prohibitive, and the reason being is because of the spread of risks based on the number of employees covered. So there was a significant advantage to being part of that healthcare trust. We have been advised that in, one of the conditions to maintain eligibility within the trust, and it would be my recommendation, giving a review of the potential demographics and risks of the, of an opposite direction, that the town remain at this point with the Hampshire County Group Trust, although we will look to see if there's alternatives. But one of the requirements of the trust is that the towns and member communities, school districts, adopt sections twenty-one through twenty-three of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-two B. So that's a particular section of the law, thirty-two B of the Mass. General Law, is governs how employee benefits and retiree health insurance are provided to members of communities in Massachusetts, and recently, well, not recently, but in two thousand and eleven, the, the governor signed into law at that point, I think Governor Patrick DeVall at that point, signed into law the local adoption for a community to adopt sections twenty-one through twenty-three. So there are core provisions that come with the regulations, but this was a recently added benefit for cities and towns and school districts to take advantage of. In a, in a brief way to explain it, twenty-one through twenty-three provides the organization with another mechanism in order to modify the employee benefits program. The reason why the healthcare trust is asking each of its member communities to adopt this is because in order to maintain robust benefits that are cost affordable, there will likely be recommended plan design changes in the future as part of the steering committee's direction. So we are in a position, from a practical perspective, where we need to adopt this to maintain the option to have those robust benefits at a low premium cost, or the alternative is if there can't be a solicited quote for a competitive price for the current benefits, we may see, if we can't continue that arrangement, a much higher cost and premium, and not likely replicating the current benefit package that's available. We don't have complete details on exactly what the benefit plan design is likely to be for fiscal year twenty, we certainly suspect on what type of changes there may be. We would suggest that, and I'm not being insensitive, but they're benign, generally speaking, compared to what other healthcare plan design changes have been proposed to cities and towns and regional school districts. So for that reason, the meeting with the IEC to explain all of these issues has occurred, there was some collaboration and discussion, so it was certainly, it would be my office's recommendation that the town consider doing this for that specific reason, so that's sort of the overview of where we are.
So, Ken, just, is this to mirror, mirror what the GIC does now?
Okay, so, great question, I, so if I can clarify the sections, and I think Robin talked about twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three in their entirety, so the rules, obviously nothing's easy to understand in Massachusetts. So the rules, obviously, nothing's easy to understand in Massachusetts, but adopts, adopting sections 21 means that there are two avenues in which to adjust benefit plan designs. Section 22 is what we're focused on, which means we're not changing the arrangement of the health insurance, maintaining the relationship with Hampshire County and Blue Cross Blue Shield, but simply modifying the cost share features. In no event can the changes to the cost sharing features exceed what the Group Insurance Commission would establish as a benchmark level of benefits, higher deductibles, higher copays, for instance. So section 22 permits the town to change the benefits up to that level, cannot exceed them, but only up to that level, but doesn't change the insurance arrangement. So we would maintain the relationship with Hampshire County and Blue Cross Blue Shield. In addition, there's another avenue, which is sections 23, which is not being contemplated, or for some of our other clients that did implement that, that's an actual transition from the current insurance arrangement to the Group Insurance Commission completely. What that would mean is, we would jettison our arrangement with Hampshire County, and then next July 1st, all of the members of the, of the plan that are covered would be obligated to enroll in any of the GIC plan options. And right now, there's about six carriers, about 13 plans. Blue Cross Blue Shield is not a plan provider, and the base plan design for the GIC itself is higher deductibles and higher copays. That is not being contemplated, to be clear. We were not asked to adopt that section. It comes with the package, if you will, but what we're focusing on is just simply being in a position to comply with your insurance company's arrangement, Hampshire County, and then making sure that we can take advantage of the new plan designs and not have to worry about going out to find a, a plan replacement. If one's available, it'll be considered, but the demographics of our plans suggest that may be a challenge. We've kind of explained that to the employees, because we're not a large group, we have less than 100 employees, and typically, the benchmark in Massachusetts for employer plans that can get, or see some aggressiveness would be at over 100 employees, because claims data would be studied, and that's not going to be made available to us, given our size.
Right. Excellent. Anybody in the board have any questions or comments?
I'd like to, I'd just like to thank the Finance Director for her leadership with the Insurance Advisory Council Committee. They've been doing a really good job. She's been doing very well with informing them, trying to keep them up to speed. We've had a conversation about having Hampshire come in to actually talk with the employees and give them a little more history, so it's working well.
Excellent. Anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments? Nancy?
Nancy Chalk, I'm President of UPAK. Could you clarify the 23 that you were talking about, so that you can quite understand that?
Sure. Okay, to respond, Robin? So the way the, the law is written, section 21 is, gives the Board of Selectmen in the, in a, in a town, the right to adopt it unilaterally without, happy to bargain that actual decision. And then, once that is established, then the board has the ability to issue an insurance proposal through section 22, or an insurance proposal through section 23. So section 22 just simply says, we will be modifying the plan design of benefits. So the cost sharing features of the current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, higher copays potentially as an option, but the plan doesn't change, if you will, it stays with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Hampshire County. Conversely, the, the town could issue a proposal, insurance proposal, in the sections 23, which means we are canceling our arrangement with Hampshire County, and we're moving to the Group Insurance Commission, which is a three-year commitment initially. And what that simply means is, our employee benefits are provided by the state. The state would control rate setting, plan design, and carrier selection, things of that nature, so we would not have the opportunity to bargain whatever those changes are, whatever the decision is at that point, is what happens to the plan design. But I want to be clear, you, you would not be able to issue an insurance authority proposal for section 23 unless the savings projected by joining the Group Insurance Commission, modeling how the enrollment would work, exceeds a 5% savings over what we could do locally by ourselves. We haven't even completed that task, because technically speaking, it's not required. So we're not even contemplating that, but that's how 23 would come about. It, clients that have moved into the Group Insurance Commission because their rates were so exorbitant, it was cost effective at that point in time. But again, that's, section 23 is a separate part of this whole process completely. I don't know if that answers the question or not.
Yeah, Nancy?
I don't know that I'm very comfortable with accepting 23, if that just makes it so that we go to the worst insurance in the state. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
But, Mr. Chair, what we're voting on tonight wouldn't force us to go into the GIC?
No, it's, it's one of the things that you have to do as you pick up 20. What is it?
Just the process.
So is this, so all we're doing is adopting from the state, but we're not acting on saying that we're going, we're joining the GIC?
If I could just add, not to confuse things, the technical process to move to the Group Insurance Commission, we would not satisfy the requirement. Our premium rates are so much lower than the GIC, that we would not save enough money to mathematically be eligible to move to the Group Insurance Commission. So it's, practically speaking, it's not even a consideration. So we couldn't meet the theoretical requirements of the law, which requires us to earn an additional amount of savings. And the reason would be, because of the rates under the Group Insurance Commission are much higher than what the rates are that are being charged here.
Right, but in the future, if those switch, would, is that an automatic thing? Would, would that come back to us for a vote? Would be that process?
So, in the future, if the board decides at that point to once again invoke, because we don't have to adopt it, we've already adopted, well, let me be, presume it's adopted. Once it's adopted, then you would only invoke either sections 22, modify the plan design, or you could consider section 23.
But that would be a separate action?
It's a separate, separate process, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sappu?
Move that the town elect to engage in the process of change health insurance benefits under Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Craver?
You are on page 85.
John? Hey, John?
Mm-hmm.
Joe, ask David, you're going to refuse yourself?
Yep.
All right. But the record shows Selectmen Singer's refusing himself on the next discussion, which would be rescinding Article 27 and article on whether to ban all marijuana establishments. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. You have received a petition to hold a special town meeting, which has the following article. Article one, through petition, petitioner hereby requests that the Charlton Town, Charlton Board of Selectmen to call a special town meeting to consider the following article, to see if the town will vote to rescind the adoption of Article 27 of the Town of Charlton 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, or take any other action thereon. The purpose of this article is to give voters a say in the mega marijuana facilities coming to Charlton and their sitting. Sponsor is petition. You also have received a valid petition certified by the town clerk to add a second article to the special town meeting. It reads, Article two, Citizen Petition, Prohibition of Non-Medical Marijuana General Bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaw by adding a new chapter and section that would provide as follows, and further, to amend the table of contents to add said chapter and section. Chapter 157 Marijuana, Section 157-3 Marijuana Establishments. Consistent with Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, including marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retail, or any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses shall be prohibited within the town, or take any other action thereto, sponsored by the petition. Due to the requirements to hold a meeting within 45 days of receiving the petition, we are recommending scheduling the meeting for Wednesday, August 1st. We have checked with the school, and they are available. I have also asked town council if you need to open and close the warrant, and he informed me that this is purely a formality, and by voting to accept the proposed language, you are essentially doing the same thing. I recommend the board vote to approve the warrant as presented and to authorize the town administrator to post it by Wednesday, July 18th, which is tomorrow.
Does the board have any discussion on this? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, motion?
May I ask for a classification, please?
Sure.
Ms. Craver said East School, could that be Charlton Middle School?
Middle School.
Heritage?
Heritage.
I believe it's a regular school. Let me just grab the warrant.
Thank you.
Is it Charlton?
No, finding out now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it would be in the Charlton Middle School, Wednesday, August 1st, at 7:00. If you take these, if they, if it passes through the chair?
Sure.
I make a motion that we vote to approve the warrant as presented and to authorize the town administrator to post it by Wednesday, July 18th.
Do a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing, any discussion?
So that's for August 1st?
Right. No discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I would need your signatures tonight, so that I can do that in the morning before I leave.
Do the paperwork?
Paperwork's right here. Karen starts it, we'll just bring it down. Mr. Singer will be abstaining, so it'll be the two of you, and that will be a form.
Okay, thank you. Should I bring back Mr. Singer?
Yes, please. Okay, next slide.
Building inspectional fees, review of fees. I'll wait till Mr. Singer comes back. And Kurt is coming.
Kurt, before we get started, thank you very much for putting that time one together.
I, I hope it is, it is as accurate as I could make it, and it has, you know, all the relevant information that I could find. I'm, I'm sure that there's other information out there, but like anything else, it's, it's a learning process, but it, I'm trying to provide you with factual and correct information so that we can navigate this issue appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. The building commissioner is here tonight to propose a new fee structure for the Department of Inspection Services. On February 13th, he informed you that the fees for the department had not been reevaluated since July 2008. He is presenting your recommended changes based on a comparison to adjacent and similar towns, including but not limited to Auburn, Dudley, East Brookfield, Lester, Oxford, Southbridge, Spencer, Sturbridge, and Webster for their current fee structures. He writes in his memo, there are three ways permit fees are generated, generally determined. One is per inspection amount, two is a percentage of the project cost, and three is a square foot multiplier. The Town of Charlton has used a mixture of the preceding methods. Each method has advantages and disadvantages. In addition, the direct and indirect cost of services needs to be taken into account. The goal of this project was fourfold. One, to see if our fees were easily, easy to determine and understand. Two, to correct fees given the cost of providing the services. Three, to be equitable with like communities, and four, to ensure proper compensation of our inspectors. To achieve goal one, fees were easy to determine and understand, he recommends in all but commercial building projects, fixed fees with a set number of inspections to be established for each type of work. To achieve goal two and three, correct, given the cost of providing the services and equitable with like communities, he recommends the attached fee schedule and policy be adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And to achieve goal four, ensure proper compensation of inspectors, we are recommending the realignment of fees charged for per inspection method be equalized for both the plumbing and wiring inspectors, and between residential and commercial inspectors. The skills, knowledge, effort, and certification requirements for trade inspectors, whether residential or commercial, plumbing or wiring, are all on par, are on par in all aspects. Additionally, the trade inspectors provide their own vehicles, they pay the required taxes on their earnings, attend required professional certification training, answer phone calls with questions, or for scheduling inspections and follow-up calls, all for the inspection fees they are paid. Considered in the overall cost for permits are office processing time, office expenses, support of other offices such as the Assessor's Board of Health and Collector's Office, and other expenses related to the process brought into the town as a direct result of the building project. Page three and four show the proposed fee schedule for the Board of Selectmen's consideration and approval. Under the proposed fee schedule, recommended building permit fee increased slightly. Accessory structures, sheds, pools, and improvements will increase to cover the costs incurred for the service and number of inspections rendered for the project. Plumbing, gas, and electrical inspections are equalized. Commercial work fees have been increased to $6 per thousand, value of work up from $5, and is still less than the average of $8 per thousand. For building inspections, fees are paid to the town with the commissioner and the administrative assistant paid a fixed salary. The local inspector is paid per hour for work. Plumbing, gas, and electrical inspections for the town retains $5 of the fee, and the remaining $70 is voucher to the inspector. The plumbing, gas, and electrical inspectors are responsible for providing their own vehicle with insurance, attending required trainings, maintaining certifications, returning calls, and scheduling their own inspections. You do have a suggested motion here, and Mr. Meskis is here to answer any questions. We also have Mr. Starkus, who is our plumbing inspector, and Mr. Ostrowski. I knew I was not about to do it.
It's Mr. Joseph Ostrowski.
As our electoral inspector, so you also, if you have questions for them, they're here. That's going to be written on my tombstone, could not pronounce anyone's name.
Does the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Meskis?
I have one. I want to thank Mr. Meskis for putting this together, looking over it, it was very comprehensive. It's well, well broken down, and it was interesting to see all the discrepancies in how we, how we updated our, our policies, so thank you.
I too want to say thank you, and I did have one quick question. When you reference, like, the average on page two, you say average of $8 per thousand, you're refer, I should read the whole thing. Commercial work fees have been increased to $6 per thousand, value of work up from $5, and is still less than the average of $8 per thousand. Are you refer, is that state average, or the average of the towns that you compared us to?
So, there is a comprehensive spreadsheet that was attached, hopefully, to this that I provided.
That was a state?
So, of the comparable communities, the average came out to $8 per thousand of work.
Thank you.
So for those communities that we listed...
So it's the ones you listed, not the state?
Right. Oh, yeah. The further east you go, fees start increasing exponentially.
The comparison did not make it in because it's so big, so could we have a copy of that up here, please?
Yeah, I know it was in the original email that was sent to us.
I know, you did. Thank you.
And then we couldn't read it. Somebody was thinking maybe you're sliding something by.
No. No.
But thank you again, Kurt. There's a lot of work that went in, and to Joe and Peter. That, you know, all I hear about the inspection department is all good things, how timely they, you know, professional, and, you know, use a friendly, so thank you.
Well, thank you, because we often hear the other...
Well, there's always the squeaky rail.
So, a, a problem came to light today with the issue of refunds for over, fees overpaid. The Board of Selectmen has had a policy for a number of years... The Board of Selectmen has had a policy for a number of years that's referenced in my document here, that if you had, if a person had a dispute about what the building permit fee was, and that it was being overcharged, they could petition the Board of Selectmen for a fee adjustment. We've done that a couple of times. Bay Path was one project because we're a, a community, so we were sort of charging ourselves. I overcharged for a deck once because of the thing. But we, I, I'm going to say I, only knowing what I know was, is that our basic policy and the policy that I, the mantra that I put forward all the time is, is there are no refunds. We have an electrician who, through his staff, decided that he should pay $150, only required one inspection, which is $40. The electrical inspector was paid that remuneration, the 35, because we stole at this point, and we will continue to get $5 per inspection. But where, there has been a, a large discussion about how this should be. Calling around quickly to the neighboring communities, nobody issues refunds. But Ms. Craver, you know, brings up a point, and I'll let her speak to it, but what we're going to suggest, what I'm going to suggest to you is, is that when you make the, the motion, hopefully, that accepts these fee schedules, is that we, for the time being, delete the line that there are no refunds until I have enough time to come back with a, a comprehensive policy for that, that would be, you know, fair and equitable and, and taken into consideration. The issues, I know, Mr. McGrath, you're aware of this issue because I think you got called on it.
One of the things, and I'm just going to speak to myself, I, I, you know, and I understand why you, you had the no refund thing, but I don't, I don't believe that that's fair to anybody, that if we don't do the work, we shouldn't charge them for it. You know, it, but that's, that's me, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, you know, we do need to, if that's the policy right now, and we, and we're going to vote, vote this with the motion, I would, I would say that we strike that line when we make the motion, and that's just my opinion. So does anybody else have anything to say?
As long as we obviously take it up at the future meeting.
Can I add a little information?
Sure.
So I think the policy has been correct. I think the way it's been applied has been expanded, and, and I can understand how that happened. So there, there should be no refunds for the base permit. Whether you take that permit out, whether you build what you're going to or not, you've gotten the permit. The question is on the inspectional fees, and if you buy ahead more fees, so if you're estimating that you're going to take out a permit and you're going to need an additional three inspections, those are $25 apiece or some variation. What they're doing is, they're assisting us in kind of pro paying for those individual inspections, and we should be looking at having a true up at the end so that they're not losing that by trying to be proactive. The alternative is that people would just pay the base permit and then continue, we'd have to bill them every time for the additional. So we want to continue to encourage people to pay ahead for additional inspections, but we also want to give, that's the portion that we're talking about, giving a refund, not refunding the actual permits. So just wanted to clarify that there's two pieces to this.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I agree with what you had said, Mr. Chair, earlier.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Saffravich?
Move that the fees listed on the page is labeled, building fee schedule, wiring fee schedule, plumbing and gas fee schedule be adopted and take effect for all new projects and inspections not currently paid for, and also striking the language for, about no refunds.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meskis.
Hope that we continue to make the crowd and, and correct things when they're wrong.
I've been doing charter inspections for 31 years.
Congratulations, Pete. And thank you.
Yes, sir. The Knights of Columbus Charlton Council, 11379, is seeking to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive to benefit the special needs children of the town, state, and nation. They would like to set up a voluntary toll road on Saturday, October 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the corner of Main Street and Masonic Home. The request has been forwarded and approved by Chief Maxfield, contingent upon the following safety precautions. All volunteers must wear bright colored vests, yellow, orange, red, or green, while soliciting donations. Orange traffic cones must be set out on Main Street and Masonic Home Road for a distance of not less than 50 feet on each respective way prior to reaching the toll station. A minimum of five traffic cones on each roadway should be put in place at the distance of no greater than 10 feet apart. And lastly, signs warning voluntary toll road ahead must be erected on both Masonic Home Road and Main Street, not less than 75 feet from the toll collection area. Should the board approve this request, I would ask that you consider including Chief Maxfield's recommendations into the motion.
What's the board's?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Singer?
I move to approve, including Chief Maxfield's recommendations.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I think it's a great idea for a good cause, but do we typically ask the groups to sign any kind of documentation so we're not held liable should, you know, if something occur, an accident, or if, because they're in the middle of the road?
I'm going to, I, first of all, they're, they're at their own risk. The town has no liability for this.
Even but because we're approving it, we don't?
Even though you're approving the permit, there's no liability to the town. No.
Okay.
Good question.
If I can just add, it would be different if it was on town property. We absolutely would do that.
Where it's on the road and the police chief has looked at it, they have, they have their rules and regulations that they have to follow. It's at their risk. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next. The finance team is recommending the board approve the following four policies: capital planning, debt management, financial reserves, and reconciliation. Would you like me to read all of the descriptions, or have you had an opportunity?
Has the board had a chance to read all these, or would you be like Ms. Craver to read them all?
I read them.
You did read them.
David also. Okay. So any, any discussion on this?
I do want to thank the, it seems like every, every meeting we have now, our finance team puts together some really good recommendations and, you know, really being able to crack down and just make it function that much better.
Hearing none, so?
No, it's just the, the same question. I'm assuming FinCom has seen these already. They come here, you approve them, and then they'll go to FinCom.
They've, I believe they've also been in discussion with somebody.
Yes.
So?
And the finance director will be going tomorrow night. So I do again want to thank the finance team, which consists of the finance director, who chairs the, the finance team meetings, the assessor, director of assessing, the treasurer, collector, and HR.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saffravich?
I would move that the board approve the policies as presented pending finance committee approval.
Second?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks to the finance team.
Yes.
Ms. Craver, CMG.
Gary.
There it is.
We always enjoy when Gary comes.
It's always in white.
So please find attached two proposals from CMG Environmental Incorporated for environmental services for the period covering July 1st, 2000, and that would be 18 through June 30th, 2019, for the old Highway Barn located at 54 North Main Street, and the community center located at Ford Dresser Hill. We anticipate that there will be less work for each, thus both contracts are lower. Regarding the Highway Garage, we need to get 59 North Main Street connected to public water before we can submit a permanent solution report. The summary of the financial information that you have is the Highway Garage. FY '18 approved budget was $10,133. FY 2018 total invoicing $7,878.25. He was $2,254 under budget. And as you can see, under Ford Dresser Hill, again, the under budget was $3,350. Gary from CMG Environmental is here to review the proposals with you, and these costs are paid from the environmental account.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I've met everybody. I don't know if I've met you, Karen.
No.
But Gary Magnuson, one of the owners of CMG Environmental, been working with the town on these two projects. We are dangerously close to completing both of them. The Highway Garage had a pretty large contamination spill many, many years ago. That site is essentially clean at this point, is eligible for a permanent site closure. The only thing holding us back is one more residential property we need to get connected to public water. Robin and I have been working diligently with the absentee owner of that property, I believe he lives in Texas, trying to get him signed up to, to connect. Soon as we can get him connected, we can close that site out, until which time we have to continue to do some reporting and testing. As Ms. Craver said, we had a budget of about $10,000. We spent like $7,800, so we were under budget last year. This year, we're recommending a reduced budget of $8,753 for that project. I don't have all the specifics in front of me, but I think we've been under budget on these projects for the last three or four years. If and when we can finally get everybody connected, we will have to do a permanent solution report, which is about a $4,000 task. We can either do that in the following year, or hopefully we'll have enough money left in the budget at that point in time to just do that report and close that out, and then I don't have to come to you next year and talk about 54 North Main Street. So that's the proposal for 54. Do you want to talk one at a time, or you want me to talk about both of them?
Ms. Craver, your suggestion?
Why don't we go through one at a time, and then they can vote, and you can go through the charges?
Okay.
So your total project budget recommendation is $8,753.
Correct.
And that would be on page 117.
We have a motion to enter into a contract.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of tendering to a contract for environmental services for the Highway Garage.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In regards to Ford Dresser Hill, this project is a little bit more challenging to finally close out in that we only have two options to close this site out. The groundwater concentrations at the site have to meet the drinking water standards, or all properties within 500 feet need to be collect, connected to public water. There is not public water on the southern, eastern, downgrading side of Dresser Hill, so we cannot connect, I believe it's number 14, which is about 485 feet away, just inside the 500-foot boundary. So we've sampled that house every few years. Last year's budget was $5,996. We only incurred $2,646. One of the main reasons for that is I did not do the groundwater testing, or we did not do the groundwater testing at the Ford Dresser Hill property. I was just going to hold off and do it this year. The concentrations were still relatively elevated two years ago when we did them, so I figured, let's just wait another year. We're still compliant with the EP's regulations. I basically didn't want to spend your money if we didn't need to. So we do have a recommended budget of the same amount, $5,996 for that project, and we will test the groundwater this year. So we'll incur most of those funds, but hopefully be able to provide you an update.
Ms. Craver?
Yep. No, go ahead.
Nothing?
$5,996.
Yes. So does anybody have any questions from Mr. Magnuson on Ford Dresser Hill? Yes?
Hi, I have a question. I'm Norrie Smith. I'm a resident.
Can she come up?
Come on up, boy.
I'm a resident of Dresser Hill Road, and I was just wondering if you could clarify the nature of the contamination at Ford Dresser Hill Road, and if there's any possibility of that traveling underground on the way that's happened up on.
Absolutely, I can. The nature of the contamination at Ford Dresser Hill is a former gasoline underground storage tank, was located, if you pull into the community center, on the right-hand side in the driveway. That tank had been removed without permits years and years and years ago. After the town purchased the property, we did some additional testing, found out there was still contamination there. Dug out some contaminated soil associated with that. That area where the tank was is now clean, but some of it migrated underneath the building to the, well, was at that point, it was the pig, pig pen, but now it's, it's below the occupied structure. And there still is some moderately elevated concentrations of petroleum contamination there. MTB levels are not real high, but there's other gasoline constituents. We do have wells down gradient and in all directions from that, and they're not problematic there. It's really contained right to two wells, just down gradient of the property, of the building. It doesn't even get to the access road off the backside of the property. So it only goes about 30 feet away. The drinking water well on site had been tested multiple times, had low concentrations in it, and it's now been disconnected and it's connected to public water. You're welcome.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Any other questions or comments from the public? We have a motion. So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that was for Ford Dresser, just Mary. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Please find attached an MOU between Bay Path and Regional Vocational School, the town, chief of police, and a sign-off by the union for a school resource officer. Chief Maxfield is here to walk you through the agreement. He and the lieutenant, Superintendent LaFlesh did a great job of working together to work out the agreement that benefits both the town and the school.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, Chief.
Aye. Didn't know I was walking through. Good thing I brought my glasses. Your readers. I take it, Mr. Chairman, you guys have already seen this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So essentially, we went through a process. Superintendent LaFlesh and I, with his staff members, selected an SRO. Essentially, he's going to pay 10 months of that person's salary for the year, and I get to use them in the summertime for, you know, to fill in, that, that kind of thing. I've had discussions with Union President Bedard, who was seated in the back there, and, you know, essentially, the SRO is going to be at Bay Path when the school is open, and he'll be encouraged to take his time off during school vacation weeks in the, in the summer. So I can go through line by line if you want, but I guess you guys have already seen it, so.
Mr. Saffravich, just a question. I do want to thank you and Superintendent LaFlesh for working on this. I think it's just a, it's an elegant, not solution, but it's definitely addressing some of the issues that are going on. For the 10 months out of the year, the other two months, do we have a cost for that?
I do, because I knew you were going to ask, sir. So the schools portion will be $78,024.08, but you know I'll squeeze John for another couple of grand, so I'll try to make it an even 80, just, you know, because that's how we roll. But, but that's salary, but the cost of toll, cost of salary and benefits for, for, for the officer. And then we think that, you know, the rest of it, you know, fill in shifts during peak vacation times, that kind of thing in the summer, the, will offset.
Right.
With the overtime savings.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And there shouldn't be any issues with filling those shifts with, with any union issues?
No, I, I've discussed it. I mean, we're still, you know, it's a new program, so we're going to have to work out some smaller things. Our plan is, I have to, Superintendent LaFlesh is away on vacation, so we're hoping to actually send two people to the training that's in August in Barnstable. It's an SRO basic class, and we're hoping to send two people so that if the, if the assigned person is not available to go, that we can plug the other person in on a day-to-day basis, kind of thing, so. kind of thing, so.
Excellent. Mr. Senna?
I'm-
I know this was one of the top things on your-
And I'm absolutely thrilled that they're making it happen, and how they made it happen.
It'll start this school year. Like I said, they're going to the basic school August, at the end of August, and then the very next week, they'll be starting up at school, so.
Thanks, Chief Maxfield, and that's how I feel.
Yes.
I would just like to check in after a month or so after the school resource officer's been there, just to, you know, get their perspective on what's going on up there.
So, anybody else have any questions or comments about this? No?
Just thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Motion?
I move that we approve the MOU.
Second. Second. With motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing unseen, none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thanks, Chief, thanks Superintendent LaFleche.
Very nice.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks to the union's cooperation on this, too.
Thanks, Billy. Mr. Chair, attached is a site plan application submitted to the planning board by Property Solutions Real Estate and Contracting LLC, with an address of 80 Harity Road, Charlton. The applicant is requesting a special permit for two proposed reduced frontage lots and one common driveway of 970 feet in length to serve two lots for the purposes of conducting a single-family home on each lot. Lot one contains approximately 9.9 acres, and lot two contains approximately 8.9 acres. The parcel is listed as Assessor's Map 22, Block A, Lot 5, and is in a agricultural district. The planning board has a hearing scheduled on the application on July 18. Should you wish to comment, we would be glad to let them know tomorrow.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the common driveway?
Okay, thank you.
No comments?
Is the lane 61A?
Usually it's because of wet. Ms. Craver?
If we could go first and skip down to the sites plans, that's your next one.
Okay.
At the board's May 22 meeting, the board reviewed the preliminary subdivision plan for Brookfield Road, ZPT Energy Solutions LLC, Masonic Home Road, preliminary subdivision plan Lunar Meadows, North Sturbridge Laundry Realty LLC, which is Treehouse, and 508 Base LLC, Sunset City. You had the following questions for the planning board. For items one and three, were these put in front of the planning board to try and get ahead of the solar moratorium? For item one, how many solar arrays are there? And three, are there any other solar arrays in the pipeline other than these? The planning board has provided the following responses to your questions. One zero-point solar project on Brookfield Road was submitted in January. The public hearing opened in February, and the planning board approved the site plan in April. However, since they had not received a building permit, the applicant submitted a preliminary subdivision plan to get protection from the moratorium. There are two solar arrays, one on, off of Fitzgerald Road and one off of Osgood Road. Next, an A&R plan and a preliminary plan were submitted to gain protection from the moratorium for a possible Masonic Home project. We have not, they have not yet received the site plan. The applicant for Lunar Meadows Project submitted a preliminary subdivision plan to gain protection, but they believe that they also need to file a definitive plan to create a new lot. They have not submitted that solar site plan. There is one other solar array in the pipeline for 107 Coburn Road. The public hearing will continue on, did continue on June 6. The project will produce two megawatts. The public hearing had opened in March, but was continued since they had to submit a definitive subdivision plan in order to create a new lot for the solar array. Treehouse submitted an expansion plan that will require a special permit and site plan approval, since it is in the BEP district. That hearing opened on June 6. And 508 submitted a modified site plan, as required by the settlement agreement. It seeks to change the use from motocross park and campground to a sports entertainment and recreation facility for gainful profit. That hearing opened June 6. I did have an opportunity to speak with one of the people there, and they are just about done.
Excellent. Does anybody have any further questions or comments on the comments from the planning board?
Thank you for working on that.
Yeah.
Thanks to the planning board.
Thank the planning board for giving us the time and the answers.
Okay. If you want to go to Fourscore next, and then we'll go back up to the OPM.
Sure.
So, as you know, there were two marijuana developers who wished to locate in Charlton after the retail establishment, Healthwise, was approved. One was VGG, and the other was Fourscore LLC. Both wanted to cultivate and have a retail component, given that VGG had contracted with the town first. Once I became aware that the town had wished to limit the marijuana retail establishments, I asked Fourscore to hold any negotiations until after the special town meeting, as we had an agreement with VGG. We recommended that there would be three retail establishments to accommodate all developers known to us at the time. Town meeting, after much discussion, limited the retail licenses to two establishments, and I informed Fourscore that the board would not move forward with the third retail establishment, given the vote. They did try to argue that the language in the article said that the planning board could only approve two special permits, and since Healthwise and VGG would not need a special permit because of their grandfathering, then the selectmen could approve two more retail host agreements, because the planning board could still give two special permits. I made clear that the board's selectmen most likely would honor the town meeting vote, and the spirit of the vote limited retail to two. And if one of the other establishments were to close, then they would be next in line to request a retail permit. Subsequently, Fourscore originally had told me that they were planning to drop the retail component and only apply for the grow permit, for which the town meeting did not limit in their zoning bylaw. Last night, they had held their community meeting, and they demonstrated that they actually would like to move forward with retail, so they added the component back in. They were invited to hold their community meeting, required by the Cannabis Control Commission tonight, but preferred to hold their meeting last night. They are here to introduce themselves, and I have not continued any negotiations with them since the town meeting, and was only made aware recently of their intention to change to, from a grow retail to only a grow. But, again, that's changed. And I will say, as they're coming up, they did a very good presentation last night, very clear and thoughtful.
Okay, thank you.
For the chair, I did want to mention, I did see the presentation last night, and it was very well done. Thank you for that. And I, just to clarify, I did have a question, and maybe, I think Ms. Craver can probably We submitted, we received requests from both VGG and Fourscore. In my understanding, I know last night they had mentioned it was about the same time, and I just was wondering the time difference. I'm assuming we timestamp, you know, date and time on when we accept applications or whatever. When did they submit theirs compared to VGG? Because you, let me be very clear. You know, at the June meeting, I was a little frustrated, and it was because it was really the first I was hearing about how far along with-
Somebody else.
Yeah, so, if I could just, if you could just let me know, or let everyone know, when, was it at the same time? Who came first? What happened? Why did we decide to move forward with one versus the other?
As I've told them, the VGG came in and started talking with me first. I had been starting to talk with them when these guys came forward. I had asked them to provide something in writing. I think the first thing I got in writing from them was in April. I can go back and take a look at notes, but clearly, I was further along with VGG than I was with them. And I know that they did state last night that they were at the same time. I didn't make that objection or make that clarification. I didn't think that that was necessary to do that during their presentation.
And I guess I would ask again, do we, when something is submitted to the office, do we actually date it and stamp? Do we log it in, basically? Do we know certain things?
I'm not even saying that it was based on something that was submitted to the office. It was based on, a lot of this started as verbal, as a call to say, hey, we're interested, what do you think? Both of the applicants, I said, you need to go to the building commissioner, make sure you're able to cite there before I'm going to start negotiations. I came back to this board, and I know you were not here at the time, but the board was very aware that there were two that were coming in, and they were also made aware of the timing.
Excuse me, may I add, from our perspective? My name is Dan Glisman. I'm an attorney working with the Fourscore team. I might just expand slightly on the timeline. So, our team, and this was, is part of our presentation, and I can get into it in more detail when we discuss the project itself, but we began, you know, searching in Charlton for property in January of 2018, entered into an agreement with our prospective landlord at 144 Sturbridge Road in early March, I believe it was March 12. Shortly thereafter, and sort of during that time, I had reached out to the town administrator's office, as Ms. Craver just mentioned, by phone, and was directed to reach out to the zoning enforcement officer and the planning board, both of whom we reached out to in writing with emails describing our project and a draft set of plans for our project as well. We received a response from the zoning enforcement officer on March 20, I believe, indicating that our site was eligible for the project that we were proposing, as we had originally envisioned it, at which point we came back to the town administrator and to sort of further discuss the host agreement process, and since that time, we, you know, we're now coming before the board, but that was the formal timeline as to when we began discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, where do we go from here?
If we may, we'd love to, you know, give you guys a similar presentation to what we presented last night. Mike, you want to get started?
Yeah, I'll start on.
I'll just pass out some materials.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
These were copies of the presentation slides that we handed out at last night's committee meeting, and also have copies of our draft plans. Thank you.
So, I'm not quite sure what to do if I can't stand up and wave my arms.
Feel free.
I am Michael Curtis, and I live near the University of Connecticut town, down there. Born and raised in Waltham, born in Cambridge, actually, raised in Waltham. Met my wife of a number of years, it's almost 40 at this point, at the University of Connecticut State, and, you know, became, through time, executive vice president of an engineering company you're familiar with, Boston O'Neil. Left there six and a half years ago. I was in primarily project development for the last few years, and since then, have gone on, had several startups in the energy field, one's kind of doing quite well right now. I'm not with it, but it's, I wish it was. And have gone on to develop chemical engineering-based alternate energy systems on a pretty large scale, and as it relates to today, I'm the managing member of Fourscore LLC. We are coming forward, really not as an investment group-driven bunch of people, but there are no consultants with us tonight. We are working individuals in the cannabis field. We have probably collectively 1 million square feet of grow dispensary manufacturing that we have authored, I'll use that word, put little quotes around it, through various contractual arrangements as consultants to developers in other towns, states, and the region, you know? The span of work goes from California to Maine, and, you know, the, there are specifically, you know, four people with us tonight who are our members. In the back is Kurt Smith, who heads up the cannabis service group at Boston O'Neil. Matt McGeorge, architect with a huge amount of experience in a variety of different clients and dispensary. Dan, who will do the, is corporate counsel, compliance director, and will do much of the talking as it relates to the specific regulatory aspects of it. And myself, managing member, and, you know, on the team here. We are looking to create, as professionals, what I'll fondly call the, a premier engineered cannabis production facility in the region, perhaps the nation. We've got the technical guns to do it, and, you know, that is what we are looking to do. We've got our reasons for doing that, but mostly, we want to show peace, that people can come in and say, wow, this is really something. I guess I can say, we really have unparalleled expertise compared to most groups that come down the line. We had a very good session last night, because we really do have many, many, many of the technical answers. We were able to deliver answers, very good ones, from an experienced basis, and not from a conjecture basis. The proposed facility you see here is existent. It's smaller in scale than the average ones that the team typically works on. It's 20,000 square feet, and we're not cutting out a tree. We're, we are going to work inside of the footprint of that building, with one exception, which is, we're going to call what I call a bump out, but an enclosure in the back, where we're going to put mechanical equipment, primarily air-handling and energy-driven. Beyond that, we're going to invest heavily inside of the facility. The facility is in great shape. It's been really well kept up, and it is just an ideal facility for us as we, as we work through this. We are proposing, as you detailed, you know, dispensary, manufacturing, cultivation, inside of what will be 21,000 square feet, when you include that enclosure, which is going to have the chiller in it and things along those lines. The outdoor construction that we're going to be performing is not visible from the street, simply not visible, and we believe we have ample parking after we reline to accommodate, you know, almost any use if it goes to the retail route that we've, you know, we've been It's vacant, it's an existing site, and as I say, you know, we are getting the money together for the investment in the facility. From a utility perspective, we are going to be tying in water. The facility has very good fire control as we speak now. We are going to be tying in city water, town water. We are currently on the sewer. We will be upgrading the electrical service, because one of the things indoor facilities necessarily need to do is consume a fair chunk of power, and we're going to be upgrading the service coming in there. And we're going to be, I think I said last night, we're tying in the gas line? No, there is no gas line. We're going to be burning propane, and there'll be a bottled facility, a can put in back that is going to be, you know, receiving deliveries, et cetera. And to that end, we, if we can show one picture, which is in back, you know, we're going to have two primary entrances and exits, and Dan is going to talk about security and more, but the employees will be coming in the back-left corner. You can see the bays in the middle there, the six bays where cultivation is going to take place. So, from that perspective, it's going to have a lean manufacturing flow, where the material's going to flow downstream and never go back. The checks and balances on this thing, everything gets weighed all the time. You know, there are weights to individual plants, to harvest, to post drying, there's a whole series of things that, and the checks and balances of running a shop like this have to be performed. Processing gets done in the blocked-in areas on the right-hand side, and currently, on the far right, are offices, and if we go to the point of a dispensary, that is where it will be. You know, there are offices there right now, and we would propose to, you know, repurpose those, stay with administrative offices, and it's a detail, if we do go, if one of the current, you know, approved dispensaries or drops out, we would- the current, you know, approved dispensaries or drops out, we would open. That's where, that's where we would put it. Entrance into the dispensary is from the right-hand side, entrance and exit. Entrance from the employee's perspective is in the rear top left, as you see at the northwest side of the facility. Of course, there'll be emergency exits, et cetera, but primarily exits are in that place, and that has to do with diversion control and a whole series of other things that that addresses by limiting access and accept on an emergency basis. So, we are, we are looking to work with Charlton. We believe in doing this, we're bringing something that is a nice size for a facility this size. You know, we've got some ideas on what we could do with the engineering aspects of this, on how we can make this showpiece, et cetera, but it really is going to have the latest and greatest as it relates to technological, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, MEP work there, and anywhere from atmospheric control to other very, very important things in increasing production inside of a relatively small facility. Given that, I'm going to pass it on, and Dan is going to pick it up.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Dan Glisman, an attorney working with the Four Score team. A little bit about my background, I've been working in the cannabis industry here in Massachusetts pretty much since its inception. I participated in the licensing of the first medical marijuana facility in the city of Boston, and more recently, some of my clients were approved for the first adult-use retail license in the state, and I've worked with a number of other companies and in a number of municipalities across the state. And, you know, so as Mike stated, Four Score is proposing a cultivation, product manufacturing, and dispensing facility at 144 Sturbridge Road, and I want to, an important point that was brought up initially that I want to make about our proposal as it relates to the inclusion of our dispensing facility, or the retail portion of the project. We wanted to present to the community our intentions for this project as we had originally envisioned it, the project that we had originally designed for this site. In the event that the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or some combination thereof were to make a determination that we were in fact eligible for a retail license at the site, or should another group not end up moving forward. As far as the state licensing process goes, we have to host a community meeting, and we have to, you know, cover all of our bases and discuss the project to the extent that we would potentially file an application for. So, so part of the process was to bring to the community the project that we had envisioned from the beginning and originally designed. You know, we had the community meeting last night. I felt like it was a very, very positive meeting. We were up there for, you know, two hours, answering questions, to the point that there were no more questions. I spoke with a number of folks after the meeting, you know, who told us they were in support of the project. One individual was actually asking if she could put her name on a list for a job potentially, if the project moves forward. So, you know, we felt good about our meeting last night. And one other point that I want to make with respect to the retail component is working in this process throughout the state, I have seen boards that have granted host agreements above and beyond the caps that the, that may have been initially imposed by zoning. You know, some have pegged it more as a, we may be expanding this in the future, we weren't really sure we're going to get this much interest, we don't want to close people out, you know, people are interested in coming into our community and operating sound businesses, so we want to take part in that. Others have simply not wanted to, you know, put all their eggs in one basket in the event that a company weren't to get approved by the state or were to fall short of funding. You know, this, this industry is a difficult industry to start up in, it's a very capital-intensive industry. We're proposing to put up six million dollars in this small twenty thousand square foot facility. You know, so we've seen hundreds of applications go into the state licensing process on the medical side since 2014, and we only have thirty open facilities today. So, it's a slow process, it's a lengthy process, time-intensive process. As part of our presentation last night, I went through in detail some of the operating policies and procedures that our company would implement with respect to some of the more neighborhood-centric aspects of the business, but one of the points that we like to get across in these community meetings is how heavily regulated the cannabis industry is in Massachusetts. It's one of the most heavily regulated industries in the state, and as part of our state licensing process, we will, you know, go through a detailed vetting process of our company, the members, all the policies and procedures that we'll implement, everything from how we cultivate it, to how we package and process it, to the labels that we put on. And so, a couple of the points that we talked about last night at the meeting, and there's materials in the slides that we gave you last night, are things like nuisance abatement. You know, we talk, when I talk about nuisance, I mean loitering on the property, odor. So, we'll have policies against loitering on the property, there'll be no consumption on site, we'll have odor mitigation systems in place. Security is another big ticket item that we always discuss, and that's another item that's heavily scrutinized by the state. I've taken part in drafting operating policies for a number of groups on the security side. We typically work with security consultants, but policies are lengthy, not to get into too much detail, involve a lot of cameras, limited access areas. We'll have, you know, if we move forward with dispensing, a retail component of this site will have a mantrap area to enter, so that we're properly identifying any individual before they actually have access into the area where sales will be made. All the cameras will be accessible by police and fire, and we'll work closely with both of those agencies, so that, you know, the fire department and other emergency responders know what to do in an event of an emergency, they'll, you know, we'll provide open access for purposes of running drills and the like, and, and so, you know, they're really very secure facilities, and that's part of the state's mandate. We talk a lot about diversion prevention. The state has an extensive seed-to-sale tracking program in place, you know, as Mike was mentioning, you have to weigh and track every product from its inception, the seed going into the ground, to the product that's ultimately produced. So, you know, just a number of policies that will help to keep this project safe. And another point that we brought up in our meeting last night is the community benefits. Obviously, we'll be bringing jobs to the community, we hope to have up to twenty full-time employees. We'll be entering into a host agreement with the town if we are able to move forward, which the draft host agreement that we had initially proposed involved a three percent gross revenue share to the municipality based on retail sales. We'd also proposed a one percent of retail sales to be contributed to local charities and nonprofits of our choice, and so, you know, we felt that was a great agreement. And, you know, we really would love to be good corporate citizens in Town Charlton. We're eager to move this project forward. Have a brief timeline towards the end of the presentation, if you'd like to look it over, but essentially it boils down to, as I said, starting this process in January of 2018, hopefully getting fully permitted and licensed by the end of this year, 2018, and then beginning construction in 2019, which will take up to nine months conservatively, and then we would have plants in the ground sometime late summer next year with, you know, a goal to open the doors by January of 2020. So, it's still a long process, even for a small project like this, but, you know, we're eager to move forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions by the board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It's a big investment, square footage wise, it's just doing some math.
Yeah.
It sure is. I think it's two to three hundred.
Three hundred square foot, yeah.
Depending.
That's about.
I figured two fifty, and I figure that's a lot.
It depends, it depends how many bells and whistles you hang, you know?
Yeah, that's pretty typical for, you know, many of the projects that we're seeing in Massachusetts right now are, you know, anywhere from twenty to eighty thousand square feet, and they're, they're all running similar numbers.
Yeah.
So, one of the questions I had, I guess on your community outreach meeting, you had proposed the grow facility and the retail. So, as the way, the way I understood it during your presentation is that was to cover yourself with the Cannabis Control Commission, because you can always downsize, you can take the retail out, but you can't use the community access meeting, oh, community meeting as, if you didn't show that in there, then they would probably frown upon it.
That's right.
That's right.
And we, you know...
Because I was very, I was, I was, I was a little, I would say unhappy when I heard that the retail was in there, and we had originally were talking about a grow facility through what I understood from the, from the town administrator, so I'm glad that that's been cleared up, and I'm glad we've been able to.
Yeah, and we stated at the community meeting last night, the same question came up, that, you know, we're happy to, we would, we think this is a great site for the full suite of services that we can provide, however, we're happy to move forward with a cultivation-only project, and we had indicated that, as Ms. Craver mentioned, to her and a number of the town officials, so, you know, we'd like to move forward in any fashion that we could.
Mr. Saffron?
If the dispensary part of the project would not move forward, what would, how would your plan for the facility change? Would you increase the grow space or anything like that?
Yeah, I would think the grow space would increase, I, you know, I would defer to the engineering and architecture team, who fortunately for me are both here.
Both here.
So, they can jump in, but yeah, I would imagine the grow would increase.
I mean, I would say from now, the, it's a relatively small amount of square footage that could be easily used to support the overall cultivation, host production, and management of the facility in general, and based on the timeframe that we're talking about, we would hold out hope that potentially we would learn more about whether or not we'd be ultimately successful in the, in the, in the sales aspect, so it'd be a placeholder, certainly for the time being. There's some state regulations based on square footage of canopy and flower space I'll refer to discuss, that affect some regulations on lighting power density calculations, on power loads, and other engineering criteria, so we're trying to dial in the ratio of square footage of canopy space to certain energy requirements as well.
We've designed the canopy space now to be just under the tier-two requirement, which is ten thousand square feet of canopy. Underneath that threshold, you can use as much processed lighting as you'd like. The CCC regulates it over that ten thousand square foot denominator, you are to dial that back quite a bit. There are very few traditionally, you know, H, there are very few HIG lights that'll achieve that particular light spread.
High intensity discharge.
So, LEDs, which are much newer and much more expensive, to two or three times as expensive. State of Massachusetts forcing facilities to use that type of technology. We could increase cultivation space, it would certainly add to the cost, but as my partner Mike mentioned, you know, for us, we do a lot of this work all over the state, and it's very difficult for us to show our clients our work. Everybody does, you know, they do not want to show what's going on inside these buildings. Everybody's using a different type of technology, a different methodology. For us, it's a way for us to show people in a central place in the state how we do this and what we do, what goes into these buildings. So, that's part of the business. Retail, obviously, was an aspiration, but if that didn't happen, we would move towards, you know, that, that sort of wholesale and manufacturing business model.
Ms. Craver?
Yes, I just wanted to provide a little more of the history. These guys were great to work with, and if you remember when we went to town meeting, we did have proposed that there were three grows and, three retail, three grows, and it was to be able to capture Four Score, and those were the applications that we actually had. The town decided to adopt Article 27 with only two, they cut it down from three to two for each. As you know, you've just set a town meeting for August 1st, and there's a group of people who want to rescind Article 27. If they are successful, there will be no caps, and Four Score would be able to come and apply for both.
David?
Just a couple of points. Your, the location selection is both good and bad. Route 20, good, right across from Treehouse, bad. We already have traffic problems there, and I know, so one of my questions would be, if you've discussed, and the reason I'm saying this is I don't think that if it was a grow-only, you would have that level of traffic. If it became medical and retail sales happening there, that's potential for a lot more traffic. I know that MassDOT was not happy with Treehouse from those meetings when it came about what the actual traffic flow was like. You already have that amount of traffic now, and now you're looking at potentially putting this in there, if you do go that route, it's going to have a bigger impact on the traffic flow, and so, one of my questions was, have you spoken to MassDOT, and is MassDOT involved?
So, we know that we need to address this with them for the permit. We've not gone there because our preliminary estimates on the traffic are forthcoming, and they'll come with our special permit application. I'd like for everyone to just think for a second that we're aware of projects in Holland, Sturbridge, Leicester, surrounding us, where there's going to be, there's already another retail space in the town, so that's going to, you know, we're just trying to capture some traffic in that, you know, area on Route 20. You know, it's my belief that, you know, people crossing, you know, people coming on I-90 are, you know, they have a bunch of options, and while we would like to think that we are going to be a destination like Treehouse, that's probably not going to happen, and preliminary studies on our, our traffic modeling are very low percentages to the point where we don't believe that we will have to ask DOT for that permit because we'll be under the threshold. So, you know, we'll see what those numbers are. We projected about two hundred visits a day, we'll see how those come out in the report that we submit, and we think it's going to be a modest amount of traffic, but we don't think that we are going to be a destination for people outside of this general area.
And just the reason I express that concern, Treehouse had the same feeling, that the traffic flow would be a fraction of what it actually turned out to be.
I think Nate's probably a better beer maker than I am, a better brewer than I, I don't even grow or something.
I'm not suggesting all of a sudden there's so many cars, but any amount of cars we have to consider is not just going to compound a situation that already exists.
Certainly.
So, that's why I was hoping there'd be some MassDOT conversations, but as far as the location goes, yeah. Ms. Curtis also made a valid point. You know, I have always opposed, and I'm not going to change now, attempts to circumvent backdoor loophole or get around town meeting votes, because that is our town's legislative body. However, you do have options available to you, one of which is fall town meeting, not to mention another special town meeting, which a side effect of rescinding a vote also eliminates the restrictions on you. So, for me today, based on town meeting votes, the only thing I could personally support would be the grow facility, which you have no restriction on.
I did want to point out that this is an IG for zoning, right? And the other question I had, or comment actually, was to Ms. Craver. I know you mentioned that if Article 27 is rescinded, that we have no caps... that we have no caps, but I want to ask you, I mean, no, no caps doesn't equate to no control. There may be no caps, but, and you, you read something and it was very eloquent last night, um, about we knew the intention of town meeting to reduce it to, by the numbers and, um, so why would we reverse that because Article twenty seven was rescinded? Why wouldn't we still not, because we could still control, we could still say no, it's not like the floodgates are open, or maybe it is, the floodgates are open, but we as a town between planning board and board of selectmen can still say no. But I, I just don't want to, it, it shouldn't come off as punitive if you do this. So if you want to clarify.
More, uh, just more, I'll, I'll, I'll probably try to, uh, try to clarify. If you rescind a zoning bylaw, okay, you, you, now you do not have any, and you don't have any law that allows you to say that you, you cannot do this. So if you have an applicant that comes forward and, and they decide that they're being treated differently than other people and there's no, there's no limit on what can, what can happen, the town does have liability for that. You can't, you can't capriciously and arbitrarily enforce zoning against anybody. We do have, we do have the, um, we do have decisions that we can make as a board, if you are correct.
And, and planning board.
The legal, the legal end of this is that I also believe the Cannabis Control Commission has, has rules and regulations that if there is not a law in the books and somebody comes forward, they have the, the quota that they're using for liquor license, I believe. Is that not correct, Amy?
Um, well, so I might add just one extra point. Um, our initial, um, analysis from the zoning enforcement officer was that, and, and I think that initially the cultivation aspect of the facility was what was in question. Um, as the town had already permitted one retail facility, they were comfortable permitting retail in business districts. Um, so, so with the cultivation aspect, that, that was the sort of nuance that was, hadn't been thought through and understood. And initially, the determination was that because we're in an industrial zone, uh, that our cultivation aspect would be, um, eligible for site plan approval and that the retail portion of the project would be eligible, would, would have likely been a special permit process because of retail in an industrial district. So effectively, we would have been in a similar process to what we would be proposing under Article twenty seven, um, only not affected by any cap. Um, and then with respect to the Cannabis Control Commission, they will not imply, uh, any, uh, prospective caps on a municipality unless the municipality takes that zoning action. Uh, they do ask for plans on how you remain in compliance with zoning. Typically, we, you know, put, put forth a zoning opinion from, you know, a, an attorney's office indicating that, you know, they're in the right zone, they, they may need to seek some form of relief. Um, but that ultimately i- it's a project that could be approved pending local town approvals. So, uh, to Selectman Spiehock's point, you know, certainly any project moving forward would still have to come before the board of selectmen for a host community agreement, uh, and then depending on the determination, uh, of the town on how to properly cite these, with or without formal zoning bylaw in place, although there would be no cap, uh, it may still require some form of planning board approval.
If I can just answer, Mrs. Spiehock also, um, as an administrator, what we try to do is to carry out the, the law, the bylaws of the town. If town meeting rescinded that bylaw, then we would assume that they are making a rescind. Certainly discussion on the floor would matter, but if they rescinded the caps and the limits, that would be the guiding law that we would move forward with is, which is what I'm basing my, um, assessment on as to whether or not they would be allowed to come forward. Um, but there is another piece that I don't think we've, we've acknowledged yet, which is, um, there are components, and I'm sure the, you know, you can, um, also add to this, of the, um, regulations that limit what towns can limit and how they can limit. And although we have Article twenty seven was voted, it has been sent to the AG's office for reference. We have not heard back whether or not we, because this town was a vote yes town, we have not heard yet whether or not she will allow us to, um, limit to two. So I'm going on the assumption that it's passed and, and there aren't any issues. But two pieces of that Article twenty seven could be problematic. One was the requirement that, um, the vendor take out the money and the product at the end of the day. I know that there's been a challenge to that, to the AG's office, as well as, um, limiting. So that's still kind of an elephant in the room that we haven't figured out yet.
Well, we, we also had a question to our attorney, did we not regarding the whole agricultural, can this be grown in, what a greenhouse was and was that, weren't we waiting to for that?
This is an agricultural.
No, no, this is, I'm, I'm talking about, um, but, but have not received any updates on like the host agreement with VGG? I know we voted to move forward, just a status update on where we are so we can understand where we're going.
Um, when we, when we wait until we hit the, um, town administrator's report, we'll take that under, under that. You know, we're, we're doing their, their proposal right now, so. Where, where do we go from here as a board?
So, I can make a recommendation. Um, I did meet with them and we had a conversation about where to go next, uh, and that was the, at the point where they had told me that they were, um, still interested in the grow, um, and the board dropped the retail if there were no, if the board wasn't willing to, um, go past the two. So my recommendation is if you have an interest, um, in the grow, then I would recommend that you, um, one option would be to have me negotiate a land development agreement similar to what we have. Um, and then have as part of that, um, the host agreements and non-opposition letters to come back before you, which is I think what the original intent was before, um, the limits came on.
Okay, David?
So would the host agreement and non-opposition letters be specific in that they would state grow only?
Yes.
Okay, so it would. So then if the letters are grow only, what happens to them if that was, say, just executed? And all of a sudden there was a change that the AG, um, you know, ruled that that article was invalid?
I think you, they would be your next meeting asking.
Well, I'm saying, so you would have, so you would have to execute a whole, right, so you would have to execute a whole new lift agreement?
Well, to the, to count.
That's correct.
But to, to, yeah, it's all.
Yep, yep.
Because it would be retail, it would be a different license, it would be a different type of, um, financial component.
I, I think, um, we might, if the board were to entertain this, we would certainly, um, I, I would think be more than happy to, enter into a host agreement, um, for, for the full scope of our proposed project. Um, if that were to be entertained by this board, at which point, um, you know, we, it would be on to, um, the, the state licensing and any other local permitting procedures such as the planning board to determine, um, the, the cap as applicable. Um, certainly we're, we're more than happy to come back to the board should, should it be preferable to move forward with a cultivation only, cultivation and production. Uh, however, if, if possible, we would be happy to move forward with all.
And I'm just going to speak for myself. My, my, my feeling right now is, and, and I honor the, the way people feel about the retail and stuff. If, if we're to move forward with this now, it's going to be a grow only until we see where the chips fall on anything else. So if that's the way you want to, if you, if you want to proceed that way, then we can, we as a board can discuss how we want to move to, how we want to move forward with that. Um, but as, as far as I'm concerned, right now, uh, we would end up with two retail facilities that VGG goes through. I believe the spirit of what the people asked for with their, with, with the, uh, with the bylaw is that they would like to see retail limited to two and, uh, and also two grow facilities. So, and, you know, that's my, that's my opinion. So whatever the board, whatever the other board.
I was just going to say the only other option there was at the fall town meeting, if it's required to have the, the legislative bylaw of the town, which is what that is. See if they, if they want to actually vote to allow a third so they could have one on Route twenty, it'd be their choice.
Karen?
If Article twenty seven is rescinded, doesn't have to be followed, followed up by a ballot, we'd vote it.
If it's, I don't believe so.
Didn't go to a ballot vote.
It's just a ballot. If, I believe the ballot question is if you want to, which I believe is Ms., Ms. Castigian's thing, which is to eliminate marijuana in, throughout the town with, with, so what was in the pipeline already is good. But after that, you couldn't entertain anything. Um, that, that would have to go per the cannabis commission's, um, laws. I believe, which said that if you pass, if you pass something that's banning it, you have to go to a, um, an election. And I believe they're specific about which election you have to go to. And then the town has to vote on it again. That's because we were a yes committee, a yes community already. So I think it just, it's, it's only on the ban portion of it, the way I understand it. If you're, if you're doing a limit, that's, as a town bylaw, then you don't have to go to a, to a townwide vote for that. And, and they are specific on, I believe, on how that vote has to be, at what election that vote has to take place. But we would leave that, I would leave that to town council to fill in all the blanks.
And do we, do we want to take any action before the special town meeting?
For?
For anything to move forward?
Well, I think right now that the, the way the, the way the bylaw is structured currently, it's for two and two. If they rescinded, they're eliminating any, anything. So I believe what was passed by town meeting already, which is what's controlling us now, is that we can have two and two.
Any other question?
Yes.
Hi, um, I'm Maureen Johnson-Schmidt. I live on Dresser Hill Road. And I'm just wondering, the discussion that you all have shared thus far has only referenced a vote to rescind Article twenty seven, but it hasn't talked about the moratorium vote that also was intended to follow immediately behind it?
Yeah, we, we were talking about the moratorium vote.
I understand that, but so by rescinding, it's not opening up to anything if there's a subsequent vote to have a moratorium, correct?
No, the moratorium is what we're saying has to go to a townwide meeting. A townwide, a townwide election, and I believe it has to be during, uh, either a state election or a presidential election. So. So right now, we're governed by what, what people passed at the town, at the town, at the last presidential election. And then we are governed by what town meeting passed and that. Ms. Craver?
Don't wait for me.
Don't?
I'm just like, let me see if I got something.
That's, that's my opinion. Uh, this is right now four man, four member board, so.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
You're only going to be in a yes town. So when the town, half of the town voted in favor of, um, making recreational marijuana legal, another half voted not. So it wasn't exactly an overwhelming majority. So the part of the town that voted yes, I think in implicit in that was not a yes to retail and factory growing. I think this is a town of people who, you know, many of whom may have thought, put a pot plant in their backyard and smoke it if they want to because we're a fairly independent minded community as opposed to inviting in, I'm, I'm sorry gentlemen, but carpet bagging industries to come in and try to make money and do a land grab in Charleston because we don't have appropriate laws and bylaws in place to regulate a brand new industry that we haven't had time to really fully consider a rollout for and what the impact is on the town that we all live in and raise children in and have concerns about what this type of industry may mean to that community. So I, I just wonder where the language comes from that because we're a yes community that somehow has implications? Is that from the Attorney General's office?
Uh, yes, and it's also from our, I'm just reading it now. If you, if you want, I'll read, I'll read it to you.
And I apologize, I just dug it out.
Yeah, it's, it's, the way it says is, "If a municipality voted in favor, question four, on November eight, twenty sixteen, then two votes must be taken before an ordinance or bylaw can be effective. Approval by the vote is at an annual or special election and approval by the local legislative board." And so one of our questions is that the town passed the, the bylaw, but then there was no follow-up election to that.
Right.
So that, that's a, that's one of the things where, that we're, that Ms. Craver brought up with the Attorney General. You know, they, we're waiting for that from them.
And that we're hoping to correct, perhaps?
Well, you're still, you're still on the catch twenty-two because you have, you have, you're going to rescind this and then you're going to try and pass, you know, a ban, but you still have to have, uh, an election after that.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. What do we want to do? Want to wait?
So what was the first step again, Mr. Chair, was regarding the land?
The land development agreement was the basis. The, the reason I'm recommending, um, if you're considering having them take your last permit based on the bylaw now, which would be the grow, um, permit, is that, um, rather than a host agreement, you will have to do a host agreement, but a host agreement goes away after five years. So the land development agreement was what we use, have used already. Um, I've had a conversation with them and we talked about taking the one we are existing and trying to mirror that and work with them, certainly acknowledging that they're, they are a smaller, um, unit, but to find ways to, by percentage, how, um, you voted to approve the last land development agreement. Um, the purpose of using a land development agreement as the vehicle to, and then have your host agreement and your other things as part of that would be that the land, land development agreement would not go away after five years. It would be permanent.
And the grow only fits within the bylaws and town meeting vote?
Excuse me?
And the grow only fits within the bylaws and town meeting vote?
And if the bylaw stands as it is, you'll be done. There'll be no more, certainly unless you decide to change it. But from my understanding of two and two, you would have two retails and two grow.
So I go, I go back to MassDOT and the traffic flow. What, so what? I'm trying to find a way to, a way to phrase that. There obviously could be no guarantee, or what kind of protection or how, you know, we, I don't want to have another, I don't want to say Treehouse situation, but we, we, we have that now. So how we mitigate making that worse?
So, I, I know.
If it's grow only, I don't perceive it being a problem because it's just employees going in there for grow.
There would be no guarantee that they would be able to have a retail even if it expanded. I mean, you would take that into, you could take that into account, you could require them to provide a traffic count. Um, certainly economic development is one of the goals of this, this board. Um, and certainly over and over during the time that when we looked at the override, the meetings, you know, we, there was a clear direction to find additional economic development. This is an empty building that is sitting, um, that I'm sure that the owner would like to utilize for something. It appears that if it's a grow facility only, that might be the most low pan, low impact, um, available. It appears that if it's a grow facility only, that might be the most low impact available for that. But he is, I'm going to assume that he is going to have something in there, and that won't necessarily come for you.
And could also encompass a retail use, should someone be interested?
It could be a restaurant or something like that.
Right.
Karen?
I'm comfortable-
I'm just asking, I see facial-
Well, just because I know there's so many chips in the air, I guess, regarding, and I know you don't want to talk about VGG right now, but we don't even know if they're gonna, but we don't know what's, maybe you do, I don't know, what's going on with their license, or if, you know, all of that, so, and with the special town meeting coming up. That's all, it's just.
The only thing I wanted to say is, and I always, enough, we've had this conversation in the past, because this has come up before, with the implications of restricting, or sort of restricting legal business, when you have no bylaw or law giving you the right to do so. We've also gone down that road in the past, and we don't want to make those mistakes. Regardless of what happens with the special town meeting vote, or future town meetings, it has no impact on a grow-only facility. If the Article 27 stands, grow only still fits within the bylaws and laws of the state and the town. If Article 27 is rescinded, it's the same scenario. So, go ahead.
Just to amend that, with that special town meeting is the article after, I guess Article One in the special town meeting, Article Two, which is the article on whether to ban all marijuana establishments, which I would imagine includes a grow facility.
It would not be in effect yet. So you have to go by what the actual law and bylaw is.
But to your point, do we want to do that, knowing what the intention of the residents are? Don't we want to wait to see the will of the people before we, before we-
But the will of the people is illegal, you can't do that.
Well, then it would be ruled, it would be, wouldn't be approved by the VGG.
So, it goes back to my point, it doesn't make a difference which way the vote goes, the grow is legal. If it stands, it's legal, if it's rescinded, it's legal. Doesn't matter which side of the fence it falls on, grow only is legal. If you do grow only, it fits within what they asked for at town meeting. And if it's rescinded, it's still legal.
And we know this for a fact?
That's what I was basically told by town council last time.
I know, well, do we have legal opinion, or is that another, there's so much confusion, everyone has to admit, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and there's a lot of-
That's why I didn't-
Information out that it is not accurate, so I'm one of those, trust but validate, show me, show me, where-
Which is why I'm going on, I was told by town council last time, directly by one of our town lawyers.
Would it be, would it, if, if we did postpone taking action on this till August, would that be? What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, we've, like I said, we entered into an agreement with our property owner back in March. You know, we're eager to hear from the board, what their interest would be on us moving forward, certainly. You know, we're amenable to coming back, we would entertain moving forward with a grow location only, of course, and, you know, we would love to at least be able to begin negotiations with the town administrator's office. Certainly, you know, we would come back, I assume, after negotiations for a final vote in August, regardless. This, this meeting was billed from the beginning as an informational meeting, where we were to present our proposal to the board and introduce ourselves. So certainly we'll be back before the board in August, anyway.
Actually, you bring up a really good point, sorry, excuse me. It was billed as informational, we weren't necessarily going to take any kind of action tonight.
Correct.
Except for, the board has already given me direction to negotiate with them for a agreement, and because of the vote and the change, when the board said, please negotiate with Fourscore, it was based on a retail and a grow. So I'm also going to be looking for directions, you don't have, you're absolutely right, you don't have to take any action, but that request of me is still standing, and I'm looking for some direction on what we'd like to do. So if it's, if you say stop everything tonight, I'm glad to do that.
Well, just to clarify, I wasn't on board when that happened, right?
Just to one of Karen's points, it was billed as informational, so had it, and again, I always try to be very impartial. That being said, if we were going to take action, there may be another taxpayers who may have wanted to have been here and have been a part of the conversation, who weren't. And I'm just simply saying, therefore, if we were going to do it, I'd rather do it when they have the chance to be here and participate in the conversation.
I would recommend that we would hold negotiations until our next meeting to determine the direction for the town administrator.
Just to clarify, maybe the August meeting, it looks like we're having another meeting next week?
Yeah, one or not.
On that meeting?
I do just want to clarify, it actually says for score, and it says marijuana, it doesn't say for informational purposes only, I just want to clarify in the agenda.
But given, given where we are and what we're-
I have, I have no, personally, I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
So, I just want to make sure that everybody on this, so it's a good, it's a good time to discuss the bylaw also, as to the ramifications it's having on these people, okay? So. I seem very careful. Well, certain conversations I can't participate in. I know, but we're not, we're not going there. So anyway, what's the board's wishes? Hold? And take it up at the next meeting, the August meeting? I assume they would come- We are having a meeting, a workshop meeting, on totally different thing.
Next regular board's meeting.
Correct. Okay, excellent.
Do you need that as a motion?
Oh, I don't think so.
May I just clar, just clarify, so the potential negotiations would then begin i-if the board were to move forward after the August meeting, and then we'd be back again in September for potentially a final approval?
Correct. Pending negotiations?
Certainly.
Yeah, yes.
Understood.
Excellent. Thank you guys, it was a very good proposal, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
And we have heard nothing but good things from people who are at West.
Good.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one last request, can we put this information on the website? I think you had agreed to do that, or am I mis-
We, last night was taped, so that should be on the website, what other information you talked-
I was thinking, if they were okay with having this-
Can you send me the PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Electronically? Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't trying to get you to move on it, I just wanted to say, you just, you know, can't really-
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Have a good night.
So, the next one would be on page forty-seven. Are you ready for me to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. The Public Safety Building Committee has forwarded the attached request for qualifications for both an owner's project manager, OPM, and an architectural firm for design services. We are recommending that we advertise two weeks apart in order to get the OPM on board in time to assist with reviewing the design firm. The OPM's fee will be negotiated with the design services fee, and the design services fee is not, an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the first phase. We're recommending that the building committee act as the design selection review committee, whose job it will be to score and interview the applicants. Select memograph is the board's representative. We will also be negotiating a purchase and sales agreement with Overlook for the property approved by town meeting, I expect to bring that agreement to you at your next meeting. It will be contingent upon a Phase One environmental review, soil tests, and approval at a town meeting, and the approval at a town meeting for construction funds.
And we do have Rob, who's also on our committee.
So what are we going to do here?
What I'm looking for is approval to go ahead and advertise for the OPM and the design services for the Public Safety Building.
Okay, if we could postpone for two seconds while David makes his way back down there. Sure. Do you have anything on your list of, your laundry list?
My town administrator report, if you want to go over to that, we can go over. So I handed that to you, it's attached to your agenda, because I had to do a revision.
Yep.
Fuel procurement, procurement for FY nineteen. Charlton participated in the joint fuel procurement for FY nineteen for propane, gasoline, diesel, propane, and heating oil, which was administered by Central Mass Planting Commission. The bid, the results of the bids revealed only two vendors submitted proposals, Peterson Oil and RJ McDonald. Prices were considerably higher than last year, were not obligated to enter into a contract with the awarded vendor. Staff contacted a third vendor, so that we would have three quotes, and did not submit a proposal in that process to seek a better price. Charlton Orchard, Charlton Oil provided us with better pricing on heating oil and propane. So the results are as follows. For Peterson Oil, we plan on awarding the diesel in the fuel in the amount of two dollars and seventy-seven cents, unleaded gas, two dollars and sixty cents. To Charlton Oil, the fuel heating oil at two dollars and fifty cents a gallon, and Charlton Oil, the propane for a dollar fifty a gallon.
Did he come back? There was something, when we discussed the subcommittee for solar, I believe, Robin, you want someone to take the lead to kind of organize the first meeting?
Yes.
I'd be happy to do that, unless David wants to battle me, we'll ask him. Mrs. Singer, may I?
Absolutely.
Are you good with me allowing me to organize the first meeting for solar, or did you want to do that? Okay, thank you, yeah, okay.
David, where we are now is the administrator needs us to, the town administrator needs us to approve the request for qualifications for the OPM and design services for the Public Safety Building. So I held that open to the camera. Thank you. Do we, any questions or comments about it? Motion, so a move?
Second.
Karen, with a, with a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Karen on scene, all in favor?
Aye. I would really like to thank the Public Safety Building Committee and their members for the great work that they've been doing. Do you, I don't know if he has anything, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Soil testing.
They have traveled all over the state looking at buildings.
Digging holes.
Yeah, we've, we were meeting monthly for a little while there, and then we started meeting twice a month, just because of the amount of work that needed to be done before the May Town meeting. And then since the May Town meeting, we've realized that we have a tremendous amount of work to still do. This phase right here that you guys just voted through is probably the biggest phase that we've been at so far, is getting an OPM on board to kind of help us and direct us with the next steps that we got to do. And then after that, we'll get with the building, the design firm, once we hire that person, and then there's a whole eight-step process that we have to do in order to get it all wrapped up. I have a timeline, I'll pass out to you, I left it in the back. Should be all wrapped up, we're hoping, by March. And then we'll start, be able to hold some public meetings in the month of April, and get the message out to the voters, and full disclosure, bulletin boards, you know, poster boards, and let everybody know kind of what the plan is. So, yeah, we've, we're pretty diligent with our meetings, we meet on Thursdays at four o'clock, usually every other Thursday. We have our biggest break right now, we don't meet for another month with vacations, and then we have to wait until the OPM anyway, so. But no, thank you guys for your support so far, everything is going pretty smooth. We did test holes in the property, we dug thirteen holes, we spent eight hours up there looking at dirt, a lot of dirt. Everything went fine.
Soil.
Yeah, soil, yeah, everything went fine, we didn't really run into any major hiccups. Todd Gerard, I just spoke to him tonight, he's going to get us his final soil report to us in the next day or so, but his preliminary report, reports said everything was fine, so. We're moving pretty fast, so.
Thanks, Rob.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. And just, just to let you know, I have a, a meeting, we're scheduling a meeting with the president at Masonic Home, the week I get back.
So, committee reports, I think we just had one, thanks, Rob. Does anybody else have any committee reports?
Can I also add something to the town administrator's report? I had actually thought about doing it during Fourscore, and they kind of, it ended. But you do need or want to take a look in your Read folder, we have an employee who has a relative as one of the signee partners of Fourscore. So she does not believe that she would be influenced, but I just want to make sure I point that out to you.
Do we need to sign any-
Do not need to do that, she just needs, because she's an appointed, she just needed to, the direction they gave her was to just inform her employee, and as long as you don't have an issue with it, it's fine.
So she called ethics?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent, we love people being pro-ask.
We try.
I have another thing, Mr. Chair, for the town administration report, earlier Ms. B. Whack requested for a VGG update.
If we're going to do that, Mr. Singer's going to refuse himself for a few minutes, so.
Well, I don't think we're going to deliberate, you know, just going for an answer.
No, it's not deliberation, it's just information. Just going to sit here.
What would you like me to, what would you like to know?
Just a general update on the VGG, the status of the VGG?
The, we have the document ready for signing, selectmen have started to sign it. So we have some records requests for the executed development agreement, and I'll be looking for your signatures at the end of the meeting. You have a couple of additional documents that are needed to be finished, that were attached, that you approved, and those will be coming to you at your next meeting. Jonathan will be bringing those to you, presenting them to you. We had, do you want to talk about the conversation?
No, we'll hold on then.
Are you done, John?
Absolutely.
Through the chair, just, just a question regarding the host agreement. Was that emailed, did you email it to us, it has been updated, correct?
No, the development agreement is the same, as far as I'm aware, is the same as what was presented to you, that you voted on.
Okay, so we didn't, I guess what I'm asking, I thought you had said there were some revisions.
The host agreement is being built in, you had a sample host agreement that the board approved, and Jonathan has been working with their attorney to get those documents completed, and that's what will be coming to you. And I think during the meeting, when you approved the non-opposition letter, you read out the words, it just hadn't been put into an actual form, and that will also be here.
Right, regarding the host agreement, did we implement any of the changes? That was one of the questions I had, I'm never going to find it, my minutes are in this pile, rather. We had a lot of suggestions, comments, I didn't know what we did to, did we include any of them? I had talked to you, I think, and asked if anything had changed, to highlight it.
Far as I know, it has, and I have asked Jonathan, when he brings the documents to you, if there is anything-
So it hasn't changed it?
That changed, that he needs to give a clean and a red line.
Okay, thank you.
And I've also made it clear that they need to give it ahead of time, and not just walk in at the meeting, so you have time to review it. I think so.
Town administrator's report, anything else, besides you going on vacation? And thank you for coming in tonight.
No worries, I fly out tomorrow. So I will actually come in tomorrow morning to make sure that the town, the special meeting is posted, and then fly out.
Thank you. That's it?
Feels like there's something missing, but I'm not sure, did you want to have any comment about, you had a public records request.
A way of the fees, actually I had that, my scribbles, I'm just reading it now. And before we do that, through the chair, just a quick housekeeping item?
Sure.
I had mentioned, because it was housekeeping, I could do it via email, that I had to withdraw from the committee I was appointed on, just for, I didn't want any public perception because of someone. So anyway, do I need to do that here, or how does that work, the non-clerical?
I, I think other, under other business?
Oh, okay.
You did withdraw that? So I think that that would be appropriate and I believe-
And I didn't know who else wanted to, because I might have a conflict, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you, so you-
I think, did David say he might want to go on it too? Or I don't know?
I don't, I don't think David's got the, the time. We're done with anything about VGG. I know-
Unless you're going to do Jerry Russell's-
No. Oh, oh, yes.
Waiver.
Yes.
So, so we had a request to waive, reduce or waive, waive altogether the fees for the public, public records request from Mr. Russell?
Yeah. And then, and what were the fees, thirteen?
Fees with thirteen hundred, part of the review would include twelve hours of my time. And I estimated that actually very conservatively as a minute to review and process. Some will be longer, some will be shorter. There's an extent, almost two thousand documents. It's high because the request is so massive. The request includes five terms, search terms. It includes the board's elector, myself, all public officials, the planning board, zoning, police, fire. And then there's a massive amount of information that they're looking for. So as you know, with a public records request, what I would not want to have happen is that I miss something. So it will be very time consuming. And I have told Mr. Russell that up until now, he's been, I think I have over eight records requests. Those are, have been rather small. I've just been fulfilling them. But this one is, is a large one and I have some concerns about that.
So prior to this, we've had small records requests that we haven't charged for?
Actually, I'd probably turn them around just as soon as I get them.
What's the total dollar, dollar amount I missed?
I want to say it was thirteen eighty-two. I, I want, it was high thirteen.
It actually was in the seventy thousand, I think, to start because it was going back so far and so much information that they wanted us to look up.
And a question, my understanding from reading the very lengthy document was that you had to base it on the lowest paid employee in office who's capable of doing the work. And the maximum you could charge is twenty-five dollars an hour. Did we calculate that or did we use your?
We did. No, we calculated it.
And-
I think in the, the letter that I sent, I told them what my salary was, but I told them that the public records only allowed us to charge twenty-five dollars.
And as I think the board knows, I reported shortly after I was elected, I was invited to attend the newly elected seminar that the MMA, I think, gives. And what I will say is what I learned there was, was very informative. But because of what I learned there, I strongly encouraged the board to either reduce or waive the fees.
So what did you learn there that would lead you to feel that way, out of curiosity?
They, if, actually, if you read through the public, that document, it says almost every other sentence, strongly urged to waive the fees, strong, and especially if you get into litigation. What, what you don't want to, we just don't want the perception of we're trying to block any information, which of course I know we're not, but all I can say is, you know, I attended it and I know we're looking at, actually, I think in the minutes you had mentioned from the June nineteenth meeting, we're going to be planning a session regarding the open meeting law. And then we can all ask our own questions. But all I can say is what I learned there, they said more than once, if, if you have the, if you can, they strongly urged you to reduce or waive the fees. And if you reduce them, that they should be very reasonable.
And I will also say that I've, I've let Mr. Russell know that if he wants to, you know, cull back some of the request to make the easier or eliminate some of it, we'd be glad to relook at the fees, which we've done it once. But it's still a massive amount of work.
Can we make decisions on this even though it wasn't posted? And I assume parties wouldn't have been notified about us discussing it tonight?
I would recommend that you can put it on the next one, your next-
Does that still comply with open meeting law for public information requests?
Well, we're still going, we're still moving forward gathering the information for him.
Okay.
Okay, we're not, we're not holding it up because-
What I can do is I will let him know tomorrow that you discussed it. It wasn't on the agenda. You weren't comfortable moving forward. And that you also wanted to, if he wants to be here for a discussion, that you will put it on the agenda. Does that make sense?
I think that's reasonable.
We'll put that on the August one.
That's unreasonable.
No, I agree.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Seeing, seeing no one, our next meeting, our next scheduled meeting is August fourteenth, twenty eighteen. I believe we have a workshop meeting next, the-
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, which would be the twenty, what?
What?
Twenty-fourth. And the two items that I know that are going to be on the agenda, but keep your eyes peeled because there might be something added. But one will be the actual legal documents for the post agreement. And then the other item will be, now we're going to have the thing on for Mr. Russell's-
No, you're doing that in August, so it would just be my contract.
Okay, and then your contract, which would be in executive session.
And I will not be here for that meeting. I will still be away.
So with that, do I motion to adjourn to executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffronovich.
I move that we enter executive session under Mass General, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. For reasons, number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual for three fire injured on duty cases. And for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, personnel contracts. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body and to return to pub, open session with the purpose of adjourning.
The chair so declares, do we have a second? Roll call vote, Ms. B. Whack?
Discussion first.
Discussion, any discussion? Ms. B. Whack?
Yep, yes.
Yes?
Aye.
We, see?
I'll give up.
David? Yep. Mr. Saffronovich?
Aye.
And the chair so declares and he says aye also. So we'll be exiting executive session just to, to exit and close the meeting, the regular meeting. So with that, thank you and good evening.